Oh, I know it.
I can choose.
You can read it tomorrow night.
I'll read it tomorrow. Isn't it time for more?
So you want to make nice? Yes. Danny Pryor would email me too that they're going to be -- you just asked the next couple of dates for around -- so I gave you the dates and when I need to stop by, so that's going to be coming up.
Yeah, he said that six months ago.
Well, seems today like they're hoping to have.
Was it the attorney or was it?
Yeah, Beals.
Oh, is it? Oh, no, that's the engineer, so.
Oh, he's the engineer?
Yeah, no, it's.
God, it says from Beals.
Yeah, Beals and Thomas.
Oh, he's the engineer, too. Yeah, so.
I think so. It looks, yeah. We're just waiting for one more member to show.
So you're signing this off?
Is that the cat came back? Yeah, I thought you were looking for a cat.
Oh, yeah. She came back.
She came back? Okay.
Things I'm missing, please.
That was a while back, yeah.
I totally.
She's a little getting pulled, you know? We were leaving it there. She's good.
That's not good. It's an animal abuse.
I wouldn't even start with the company. It just made really make sense to start off with that company just to get people to react to where the heck this is. No. Good food, you start with good food. We don't need to go to wire.
Type of tomatoes.
Yeah, it's okay. Oh, you moved it?
No.
That's all right. Do you have the paperwork? As you took the original?
Yeah, I will give it to you. Yeah, yeah.
You asked for money, right?
Yeah. No, I didn't ask for money yet.
You used to.
You, I thought, you know, you asked me to find out.
Find out how much, and then you went out and you asked.
But Wayne never said anything on that.
Oh, okay.
You know that, you, we are back and forth.
Yeah, but I thought you guys talked about something.
No, he didn't.
So I think we were on K121. We have no more bills on 21. So whatever it is, that's final and that's what we're filing.
As far as I know, we don't do that was the last bill.
Yes. And that was it. That's what Wayne said it was, that was it.
Which one?
21 Franklin.
Okay, 21 Franklin. But 90 Sterling, we do.
We need more money to do because.
Okay, I will tomorrow morning.
Yeah, no, he said that was $3,000. He said $2,000, $3,000.
I did, I did talk to him at the meeting, too. He didn't say anything.
Yeah? Yeah.
I think he gets confused. Okay.
Three would be good. He'll only get two, either two.
If we have a whole look.
If you want. All right, still waiting for a member.
Do you think he will solve it?
I think that's probably him now.
There he is.
There it is.
You are late, everyone is waiting for you.
I just wanted to come in and say I'm going to be 10 minutes late.
All right, take your coat off, stay awhile.
I will.
All right, let's open the meeting. And the first item on our agenda is a public hearing for the definitive subdivision for Westland Circle Extension. It was posted in the paper and we'll read the notice.
This is the Planning Board Town of West Boylston Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that in accordance with the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in West Boylston, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, January 24th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the West Boylston Town Hall, 140 Worcester Street, Board Meeting Room, Board Meeting Room First Floor for a definitive subdivision on the application of Malden Brook Realty LLC for the construction of 750 linear feet of road to serve eight single-family residential lots. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting at which time you will be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, whose hours are 9 to 4, Monday through Wednesday, and 9 to 2, Thursday and Friday. Signed, Vincent McNally, Chair of the West Boylston Planning Board. This ad ran in the paper, telegram and gazette on January 10th and January 17th, 2018.
All right, thank you. Ads and the cards.
Thanks for doing that.
Good evening, my name is Amy Bong from Summit Engineering Survey. We're the surveyors and engineers working on the behalf of Malden Brook Realty LLC. We have an attendance, Matt Watzke, who's one of the members of Malden Brook LLC. Just for the orientation of the board and the members in the audience, this here is the intersection of Westland Circle and Davidson Street over in this portion of the plan. Lawrence Street, which goes out to Prospect Street, is right up here, the dead end is approximately where my finger is here. And then for a more holistic view, if you were to go at the end of Westland Circle, and you would end up on Woodland Street, I'm not sure if his name changed down there. Put you all right by the park, soccer field. The original parcel is 11.21 acres, previously encompasses everything that's shown in green plus its roadway area here. The original subdivision that created Western Circle and Davidson Street had a right-of-way that actually, a 40-foot wide right-of-way here that provided endage for this parcel. This parcel was split in 2014 off of 28 acre piece, that's remaining land that's now owned by Minich, but it is under a development restriction. As they noted, this is a proposed 750 feet of road starting from Davidson Street extending to the end of the right-of-way at the circle. The actual pavement area is about 720 feet. And it will provide frontage in the area for eight, each one showing with a conceptual hollow blocks. Eight conventional lots for single-family homes. The range and the size of the lots varies from 40,000 square feet to 80,000 square feet, so the larger lots are often in the circle here. The 50, uh, approximately 100 feet of the new pavement area is actually within that right-of-way that was discussed before, so take this red line about here is 100 feet of roadway constructed before we get to the, with the parcel in question. General topography of the site, many of you are aware, there's a water tower right up over here in the bus that exposes the water district. And then it's downhill, there's a ridge line that runs along where my fingers here, between lot seven and four. There's a small ravine, there's a gully, so it comes downhill from David Street, comes back uphill to a ridge. There's actually an existing tree line right about, right by that cart path. Bicycles across here in the back is kind of a fair bit of the middle. The front is just mainly 40 years predominantly wooded with pine trees. The roadway configuration when we did the design, the intent was to try to hold as close as we could to existing grade, so the road actually proceeds downhill. There's a very slight crown or an intersection with Davidson Street.
Andrew.
I'm sorry?
Can you switch and move to this side?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got a lot more people there. Mark can follow, I'm sure.
Okay. We'll give them a test at the end. So, so the roadway profile, the intent is to, you know, manage all the stormwater coming off the pavement, so there's a slight leveling area at the intersection of Davidson Street, and then it proceeds downhill to a low point right by these catch basins here, and then proceeds back uphill, cuts slightly through that knoll filled area to support the cul-de-sac. So it's a pretty, with the exception of the initial approach down the road, it's a pretty, pretty even grade, nice even service. Drainage for the site, again mimicking the existing conditions, by picking up the road, we're able to capture all the surface water runoff from the roadway and convey the water there's, as I explained before, there was a slight gully here, so this area is proposed as a drainage basin to provide stormwater treatment and retention and minimize the impact of additional runoff from this area. Provided drainage calculations to support the sizing of this drainage basin. Stormwater treatment is accomplished by deep sump catch basins that flow through a storm septic or TSS removal, and then a retention infiltration basin here. A berm will be constructed across the back to retain that water and then let it mimic the existing conditions.
Is that one of the house parcels or is that a separate parcel?
All these are parcels, there's no separate parcel for the drainage.
It's on one of the house parcels?
It's on one of the house parcels, the inside and the inside. Utilities provided for municipal water and municipal sewer. Tater and Howard performed a fire flow test on this hydrant located here at the intersection of David Street and Westland Circle, and then they also performed another fire flow test farther down in the neighborhood. And what they determined and what we discussed, and I think in the preliminary, was the potential need for looping the water system to accomplish fire flows all the way to Lawrence Street. So it's a benefit to the water system as a whole, and it brings up the fire flows to their 1,000 gallons per minute mark that they were looking for. Sewer, and again, we discussed the grading because of the overall surface comes downhill and then back uphill, it never really accomplishes being able to make gravity to the existing sewer manhole or stub that's located at this intersection. So we're proposing a E1 grinder pump system, so each individual house has a grinder pump that goes into a low-pressure sewer system.
That's the responsibility of the property?
Those will be the responsibility of the property, yes.
So is that outside the right-of-way?
The, the individual grinder pumps, yes, are all located on the lots.
Well, the lines, if you're right now, people are going to be responsible for it, and it's going to be within the right-of-way, that could be a conflict or a difficulty.
Okay, right now it's proposed as being within the right-of-way.
Let's hold back questions, even me, so.
Okay.
Finish your presentation, then we'll get to.
There were a series of waivers that were requested. The first one was the use of the interior of the cul-de-sac for retention. We asked for that waiver for a couple of reasons. One, this whole area is going to be built. We didn't think that was a wise use of that area, particularly when we could get the whole thing to grade and be better treated through this system here. Secondly, you end up with a small diameter circle, it's kind of difficult to not have the first flush treatment through a catch basin and then have the depth inside the basin. The second one was the sidewalks, we discussed in the preliminary, the board was concerned about having some form of pedestrian continuity from Lawrence Street down to this neighborhood and subsequently the park located on the woodland. So they requested that we add a footpath, a gravel footpath, that connects to an existing cart path and then onto Lawrence Street. So we incorporated that as part of the water loop system, so we brought the water line, we straddled this lot line between lot six and seven, and then put a gravel path on top of it, so the water park will always have a pretty well-maintained access for the loop, and you'll have the pedestrian continuity that you're looking for. Third waiver was a park area. Regulations require setting aside some land for a park. We requested that waiver given that, A, the size of the subdivision relatively small, and B, there's a large park, again, located down at the Woodland Street to service that area. And one waiver we should have requested, but was not on the definitive plan, was addressing the width of the right-of-way. It was a small area located, again, right at the intersection of the proposed right-of-way to the existing right-of-way, where we go from 40 feet to 50 feet, to Magnus Property. Property line goes from that corner and out, and that width can't be accomplished without going off center of the center line, which is another regulation. So either way, we'd be requesting a waiver, and we felt that maintaining the alignment with the roadway would be the best alternative.
So you did request that waiver or did not?
I did not. We'll have to clarify that.
It was something that was discussed, for the record, on Matthew Watzke here as counsel for the avenue. It was something that was discussed at the preliminary, because it got left off of the definitive plan sheet that it can be added on.
So we received a series of comments from, excuse me, VHB, as well as some other town officials, I'm not sure how you want to manage.
We'll handle those separately. Is there, was there anything else you want to cover?
No, I mean, my goal was to go over the overall project and then start answering questions from the board and the audience.
So that's what, the way we'll proceed is, we do the presentation out by the designers. Board will review whatever available comments we've gotten from other town boards, and the board will ask questions, and our engineer is represented here, and they will ask questions, and then we will open it up to the public. And I appreciate everyone being respectful and understanding that we're all trying to work together to make this thing function effectively. I guess the first thing I need to do is, that's what, I apologize for crumpling the paper, but I just looked into the plans and it appears that my employer is in a butter. So that makes me potentially a conflict of interest. So I would, I can step off, or you can allow that, allow me to continue. I can do it either way. Who's our vice chair?
Cheryl. Cheryl.
And she's not here, so you're probably senior man, so you would probably take over.
If, it's fully disclosed, and if you have a reason to.
Well, they don't have to, if they just don't want.
Right, that's what I mean.
To have a potential for conflict, it's up to them to decide. So I don't want to push.
But they just wanted to, but the point is to be fully disclosed.
I should have realized it sooner, but I forgot. I thought that, I worked for the DCR, was the MBC, I'm sorry. And so there, I think where that path goes through, I think that's about where.
There's a little parcel right here.
Yeah, I thought DCR only owned on the other side of the road, but it appears that they're on this side, so I apologize for not bringing it up sooner, but it's.
I thought DCR owned all of the southern part. I thought that was what happened.
No, that's in Minnick, isn't it?
Oh, or the, or the western part?
I don't know.
Wasn't there some?
I believe MBC owned, it's beyond, down here off of Woodland Street, they.
Where's the, where's the development?
That's, that's the ownership parcel.
And the DCR owns the developer's rights or something on that Minnick property.
And where's the water tower?
Well, the water tower's up here, so they own property up here.
They own all around the water tower.
They own the water tower, they own this, there's a little lot, if you will, here at the bus, and I believe they have some property here right at the book.
Okay, so it looks like you're minimal contact, but they are.
It is, even if it were just a foot by law, it's, it's their call. They feel that I'm going to push it to be more advantageous to the DCR.
Who's "they"?
The developers and proponents.
Okay.
Is there, you can think for a second, we got a couple of questions.
Yep.
So you invoke still?
No, my, me personally, it's up to the proponents, because my employer.
Right.
Is in a butter. If they feel that there could be a conflict of interest, then I have to step out, step out of the room and be done with this.
I think with your knowledge, it'd be better to have you on the board, that's my opinion.
What's your, Dave?
Do you have to have a superior? Do we have simple majority? Was it just the majority?
It's just the majority, I think, right? You're not asking for any variances.
So the three remaining members would have to be all of us in favor?
All in favor and attend the next meeting and whatever continued ones.
Which is possible, so it's up to you.
Absolutely.
Or you.
Mr. McNally, I have no problem with your continuing to serve.
I apologize for not bringing it up sooner, I should have, should have noticed. All right, so they've given permission, so I'm staying, so there's no change, so that was extra. All right, so do we have the reports from town boards?
Do you all have them there?
This is our clerk, do you want to be reading those, or, not VHB, because we have.
Oh, it's quite weak.
Do we read, do we read all of them?
You read it, yes.
We do, every single one.
Oh, and I'm sorry, if it, if people have not signed in, please do so over here so we can keep a record of the meeting.
Okay. This is from the West Boylston Fire Department dated January 10th, 2018. To whom it may concern, I'm submitting feedback to the planning board from the fire department on the definitive subdivision plan review for the cul-de-sac called Westland Circle Extension. These suggestions are for the safety and well-being of the residents, future residents, construction workers, and firefighters responding to the proposed project area. Item number one.
Can we keep the chatter down, please? Thank you.
Item number one, after a review of the proposed site, a discussion with the West Boylston Water Department, the fire department would request the builder confirm with the fire department that the connection to the Lawrence Street water line will indeed provide the 1,000 gallons per minute, as Tater Howard Incorporated reported and would be required by NFPA. The looped system will benefit the entire area. The fire department requests confirmation from the water, from the West Boylston Water Department approving the said Lawrence Street connection to Westland Circle Extension. Item two, the fire department would ask that the proposed road be built to the planning board's standards for a public road from the beginning. This would allow the proposed road to qualify for town acceptance to ensure proper snow removal and maintenance in the future. In the event that the project is excessively delayed, the town would be supplied with a proper roadway. Item three, the fire department would suggest that the roadway be made to the minimum 22 foot wide before any construction begins in the subdivision. This would allow the fire department proper access to the site during the construction phase of the project. Item four, the fire department requires all blasting permits and inspections be obtained by the blasting company if blasting will be required. A fire detail may be required to witness the blasting. Signed, Thomas S. Welsh, Fire Chief.
So that's from a fire chief, do you have any concerns with those comments?
The only, maybe it's just a clarification with the chief, would be number two, the physical construction of the roadway, we're not asking for any waivers. The only exception being that, you know, not, not under control, this is the right-of-way with.
I think he's talking about the pavement width, so we're not narrowing the pavement down at all, it's all staying at 22 foot.
And the other one, number three, I think, which is fine, I think that's when you go through your construction to release the lots, it's something I assume that would have to be constructed. Board releases those anyway.
Is, did he say that before they release it, before it's constructed?
He said, he mentions before any construction begins.
That was, so that's before construction starts. Would that be a problem?
Just whatever that gravel access road?
Yeah, make sure that's greater than 20, 22 feet or wider, yeah, that's, that seems fine. You're going to have vehicles, construction vehicles, would need to use that, I guess. And then black permits, that's, you know, if you end up needing to have to do that, it's not customary.
It sounded reasonable.
My only concern would be a clarification, the condition that you put in the approval is just having it to the binder course for 22 feet is what would be a problem. You wouldn't want to put the file.
No, 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 I don't think they're expecting that, yeah.
I don't think that's what you suggested, I just wanted to make sure that's.
I think he just wants 22 feet of access, whatever it is at that point, gravel.
Sure, yeah, you don't want to just have a little bit of track and have people starting to make the.
And the cul-de-sac is the diameter, so that it fired the.
Yeah, that's their, your subdivision standard for that paved area. I forget the exact amount.
And so what we would be looking for is, I assume you're going to be talking to them again, just through the process, you just confirmed, it seems like it's reasonable, but we'll kind of go with that same idea that the binder course would be in place, full 22-foot width before construction begins. All right.
Done with that one?
So the next comment.
The next, the next comment comes from the West Boylston Municipal Lighting Plant. I'm just going to refer to them as lighting plant through this document, so I don't have to read, read the entire name. This is dated December 20th, 2017. Dear Planning Board, thank you for allowing the lighting plant to review and comment on the proposed Westland Circle Extension definitive design plans. The lighting plant requests the developer to consider these requirements when building the development. Point one, on sheet five of 11 of the definitive subdivision plans, request the lighting plant to relocate an existing utility pole at the end of Westland Circle. This corner pole provides electric, telephone, and cable service to the neighborhood. Relocating would require approval and coordination from all three service providers, and depending on the new location, could require new guy easements from neighboring properties. Point two, the plans do not currently include LED street lighting. The developer should plan to install lighting plant-approved LED street lighting poles and fixtures. Point three, all new electrical services shall be installed underground from the last existing utility pole on Westland Circle. Point four, the lighting plant will provide a cost estimate for the new underground electrical service once plans are approved. Point five, developer and the lighting plant shall mutually agree on location of pad-mounted transformers along with the road extension. Point six, transformer locations shall be protected from vehicle traffic and snow removal operations. Number seven, the lighting plant requires load calculations and an electrical drawing indicating primary and secondary wiring, metering locations, and transformer locations. Number eight, the developer is responsible for all trenching, backfilling, and installation of conduits, secondary conductors, pull strings, lighting plant-supplied transformer pads, lighting plant-supplied secondary junction boxes, and underground warning tape. Point nine, the lighting plant shall install and connect all primary conductors, provide and install transformers, and terminate secondary conductors in transformers. Please call at this number if you have any questions regarding this project. This is signed Jonathan Fitch, the general manager of the West Boylston Municipal Lighting Plant.
Okay, most of these are pretty customary, there is, like, item number one, so there is a utility pole with an existing light on it located in the intersection. What happens when you project a straight line and you put in a radius to make a little better turning curve here, that pole ends up inside the pavement. So we will see that it is shown, we've got a utility pole proposed to offset that, to, because you have overhead wires coming down this side of the roadway coming to that corner pole, and I believe they cross the street on Davidson Street. So that corner pole, to be the least obtrusive, or the option was to bring that over just on the side of that radius.
So you think it has to be moved how far?
I'm sorry, I don't have a scale on me, but it's about seven or eight feet to the, to the north on Davidson.
That's, I mean, the details of how far and all, it's not, when we do the revisions, we'll, we'll get that, and you'll be sure to check with them to make sure that any guy wires, wire kind of work out.
Yep. We are proposing underground electric from that pole location, is shown on the plans. There was a preliminary locations, I believe, of where those, some of these transformer pads may go. Obviously, that's ultimately up to when the builder submits his loading calculations and whatnot, I'm not sure he wants to have all that infrastructure. Obviously, that's ultimately up to, when the builder submits his loading calculations and whatnot, I don't care if he wants to have all that infrastructure. But other than, we didn't propose any lighting, like you said, there was an existing light at this intersection off of that utility pole, and I believe it's one of those old allied.
Yeah, I think they're gonna want LED.
We'll discuss that. For the rest of the remainder of the subdivision, there was no lighting intended for the.
That's, currently, it's not an LED light over there?
Pardon?
Is it an LED light over there?
I don't believe so, no.
They changed all the street lights to.
They may have done it recently.
If you look at the Google.
I'm sure the neighbors know.
Yeah, it's an LED.
It is, yeah. So, so we get that, but what you said, that you're not gonna have lighting down the street?
There is no lighting proposed down the road, I know. Just, just trees, street trees.
Why, it is required in our subdivision, isn't it?
Regulations, I believe so.
I'm pretty sure it is, but it would be whatever they, they're standard.
We'll take a look at the standards.
And I think we tried to make it optional, so we let it be open to whatever the lighting plant uses typically, so that we don't have fifteen different types in town, so. They have a residential model that I think is acceptable, it has been acceptable for, what was the last subdivision we did?
Nua.
Nua Circle, right, down off Prescott, you can look at those. At the end of Prescott Street.
Nua Circle, or?
I think it's Nua Road.
Is it Nua Road?
No, Nua Settler.
I knew it circle, sorry.
Nua Settler.
We have there on the left.
I'm sure they have a spec on what they want.
Yes, I'm sure.
And that was, that was all we had.
Good. So that's lighting, that's, the next one's a division.
Next, this is, yeah, this is from the West Boylston Police Department, dated January third. Comments and/or recommendations regarding the site plan entitled Westland Circle Extension. Of the above-named site plan, insofar as the jurisdiction of this department slash board is concerned, the undersigned recommends, they signed approval. The reason for this recommendation are as follows, no public safety issues anticipated. This is signed Sergeant Anthony Papadrea from the Police Department. So. And the last one here is from the West Boylston Water District, dated January eighteenth. Dear members of the board, the district has the following comments for the planning board to consider. Number one, due to the close proximity to the water storage tanks off Lawrence Street, the developer should be aware that an insurance policy or a bond with the West Boylston Water District named as additionally insured will be required if any blasting is planned for this project. Number two, according to MASTEP guidelines for public water systems, the working pressures should not be less than thirty-five PSI. If there is inadequate working pressure to supply water to the higher elevations of any of the proposed buildings within the project, it will be the responsibility of the developer slash owner to provide an individual pressure booster pump after the water meter to resolve this. Number three, the water service taps for lot number five and lot number six must be moved closer to or beyond Station Seven Plus Zero Zero. Number four, there shall be no domestic water services on the water main section from Lawrence Street. Five, there shall be three eight-inch gate valves installed on the tee at Station Six Plus Seventy-Five. Number six, the six-by-eight reducer must be moved to no more than ten feet from the hydrant at Station Seven Plus Twenty-Five. Number seven, there shall be no water main installation unless the project is at subgrade conditions. Eight, the developer should be aware of the current fee schedule for water and be prepared to pay the appropriate fees before the connections to the existing system are scheduled. Number nine, sheet number seven of the plans refers to the town of Duxbury and should be changed to West Boylston. If you need any more information, please contact me, signed Michael Covney, Superintendent of the Water District.
Read all those lines, huh?
Yes, well.
So, we're okay with all these comments? If, based on your comment a little bit earlier regarding hollow pressure sewer for Spain, you know, some of that configuration at the end, let's try to minimize the amount of crossings that we have between water and sewer services. So we can certainly, you know, address, address Mr. Covney's comments related to how we're tying into that water line particularly these end lots. And I think some of these overlap with some of VHB's comments related to the valving along the water main. With regard to the guidelines, we recognize that there's probably gonna be some houses, particularly on the higher elevations here, that may not meet the thirty-five PSI, and the developer recognizes that they may have to put a, you know, booster pump inside the house for part of their maintenance system.
And we didn't get a comment letter from the DPW and sewer, and especially with those grinder pumps, we want to make sure you have them get something to us. Alright. So that's all the comments we have from our town boards, we've got a representative from Vanessa in Breslin here, and if you want to review the comment letters or any issues that you've heard, or as it's been presented. Whichever you prefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, VHB received a peer review request, and the design query was transmitted to us on January eighth. VHB provided a peer review comment letter dated January twenty-third. We talked to the applicant and discussed these items. We have a five-page letter, but I am only gonna go over the specific comments we are still not agreeing on. So the first one is regarding VB thirteen of the subdivision regulations. It should be noted that proposed drainage easements included in the definitive subdivision impact the buildable areas and effective lot width of lots one, two, and eight, such that the buildable area, effective lot width, and frontage are reduced below the minimum dimensions required for the single-residence zoning district. Does the applicant consider developing separate common parcels for the drainage easements in lieu of the relatively large easement areas that impact the three proposed parcels?
Do you want to address each one?
Sure, yeah.
Otherwise, I'll be real confused.
So.
Which are those lots?
We, so lot one is here, this is lot two, and this is lot eight, I'm sorry. Lot eight is over here. So it's not highlighted very well in this presentation plan, but here is the easement line, there's a small stealing basin here that really catches overland flow coming from the hill and redirects it, you know, through its natural water course. That easement extends all the way along this frontage, because there's, you'll also notice there's a secondary cross culvert here, and the intent of that is, again, this ravine comes through, and we're really just redirecting water from the development into the drainage system, and then there's also a cross culvert, so that the mactus property won't be impacted or, you know, cause a damming of water on their property with the construction of the road. So that easement ends up being, it takes quite a bit of frontage along lot eight, but you can see lot eight has a considerable building area to it. The drainage easement for lot two and lot three, if you can see this red line, and it's a little dark here, that encompasses the drainage basin that does most of the work for the development of the road. So there's, there's two parts to this, our response is two parts to this question. The first one being, in subdivision regulations, the town specifically requires that homeowners association maintain the drainage basins. So having a separate parcel just for that infrastructure would be needed to whom? So it's, we believe it's better just to have it as an easement for the properties. And secondly, in the zoning bylaw, there is nothing that says what percentage of the area needs to be usable. And I did note that these are pretty large lots, forty thousand square feet. Looking at the surrounding neighborhood, most of those lots are much smaller than the, than the current zoning standard. So there's more than adequate, we didn't change the building lot size, there's still plenty of adequate area. And lastly, we having municipal water, municipal sewer. There is no need on the land to have an onsite septic system or other items that would take up, or infrastructure would take up usable lot area. So that's, that's why we went with this kind of configuration, and don't believe that, that the easement should be considered as part of the lot dimensions.
And the frontage issues?
All lots have legal frontage. Off the top of my head, it's a hundred and twenty feet. Don't quote me, but I believe this lot is a minimal frontage lot. This, but it has more than adequate area at the back. This lot, I think, has excess frontage. Yeah, there's excess frontage on that lot, about twenty feet. And then lot eight, that they mentioned, has three hundred and nineteen, three hundred and. It was, it is three hundred and nineteen overall frontage. So it greatly exceeds the minimum frontage requirement.
So that's the one on the right going in?
This is, this one right here, in lot eight.
And then there's another requirement in our zoning, I'm unsure that you need to have, you need to maintain that frontage all the way back, the minimum width of the lots?
Yes.
So it's a straight line measurement?
Yeah, so all these, you have, that's why you'll see some of the bulging in the lot line here to make that frontage for the building area. This one's square, it has no problem, this one doesn't. We have this one.
So that does have, it has a, has a straight line measurement, not along the curve of the.
No, it's not along the curve, it's a straight line, we're still doing that.
That's right, good.
So lot eight has just a hundred and twenty feet of frontage straight back, is that what it is?
Well, more than that, it probably exceeds it to here.
Okay.
Just adding to this comment, VHB did recommend that just the area calculations be added to the plan, so it's clear what percentage of the parcel is dedicated to an easement. Specifically, lot two, I know that over fifty percent of the parcel is the drainage easement.
Yeah, that's, that's easy.
How do they do it in other places where there's a big drainage? How does, is it needed, is it part of one of the person's?
Someone buys it and pays taxes on it?
Oh, yeah.
That's the way it goes.
Okay.
They know what they're buying when they buy into it. And homeowners association will be doing the maintenance on it, right? You've got a homeowners association for that, as well as for the sewer pump system?
That's right. The homeowners association would be granted an easement on those parcels where there's any potential maintenance that would be needed.
I think that's coming next, right, maintenance.
The next comment is with regard to VB twenty-one A. The proposed plans provided do not clearly identify proposed materials and curbing. There appear to be details to address these items, however, there doesn't appear to be any references in the site plans for where these details will be applied. The material for the proposed water line should be indicated on the site plans. Additional notes and details are required on the proposed levels. We recommended having a separate layout and material plan, so it's clear where each material and curbing type is applicable.
Yeah. We have a, the grading drainage plan to show the edge of pavement, and there is a street cross-section that indicates the materials. But yeah, we're fine with, you know, adding a sheet if necessary, or seeing if we can fit the brackets of details. It's pretty simple, it's patuminous concrete, curbing all along the edging.
Even on the tight corners, that was one, that's one of the things that oftentimes our DPW and H B often will look at is. It takes a good pounding, so we tend to like to have granite, whether it's.
On the ground, fifty programmed.
Or less, yeah.
Okay, next one is with regard to VI B six. The applicant has included a request for a waiver from the requirement that the cul-de-sac island be used to treat runoff due to the fact that the cul-de-sac will be constructed in fill. VHB recommends that clean fill materials be used so that infiltration of stormwater runoff within the cul-de-sac can be considered. Based on the plans, it appears that the entire cul-de-sac is intended to be paved. VHB recommends that the limits of pavement be reviewed in an effort to minimize additional impervious area. Basically, if it isn't, if you can't make the grading such that infiltration basin will work, at least consider doing a grass island, just to minimize impervious area.
We discussed that as well, to, you know, come up with some diameter that we could be grassed, maybe not even curved, so that we got a large moving truck or something that had to come in to return.
Check with the fire chief on that. In the past, I've heard from the past fire chiefs that they like to have it all paved, which is kind of against the.
It's counterproductive, yeah.
Right, so I think a discussion is needed, so that, that would be good.
Okay.
Next is related to four, under the additional comments. I'm just giving you the second paragraph. It appears that test pits have been conducted in the area of the proposed basin, however, the test pit data doesn't appear to be included in the submission. So analysis should also be included in accordance with Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook to determine the infiltrative capacity of the soils. For our conversation yesterday, Summit stated that they performed testing in twenty fifteen, and that all documentation was lost last year in an office fire. We recommend that testing be performed again to provide necessary documentation if it does not be recovered from the records.
Yeah, so we, we suffered a catastrophic full loss fire June eighteenth of last year. So a lot of our duck, our field books are, unfortunately, even our electronic records were destroyed. So this is an accurate statement, we're gonna perform that testing, we performed test pits in this hollow here, if you go out, you'll see remnants of where those test pits were excavated here, and I believe just below the roadway. And at the time, we were looking at potentially doing something out in the back. That one may not be entirely visible, because it was in the meadow. But the soils themselves were indicative of what you expect from a backside fine sandy loam for a horizon, B horizon, and a, and a glacial till. So.
Which means for the audience?
It's glacial till, so if you dig a hole in your backyard, you're gonna find, if it's undisturbed, not in the fill material, you're gonna have an A horizon, which is topsoil, it's gonna be very black. The B horizon, which is considered a subsoil, is gonna be fairly orange material, and then you get into what's considered a fine sandy loam, so it's gonna be a tight material, probably be very difficult to dig by hand. It's gonna have varying stones, probably from the size of your fist, and then you may impact some larger things, depending on the exact soil type. If you're, take that, that C horizon soil and try to, if you damped it, dampened it, or wetened it, okay, and you tried to roll it out into a ribbon, that wouldn't be accomplished, because it's got too much silt material in it, so it's not really a clay. But that's what you're gonna find in a, in a, this type of landform, which is a, I believe it's rumble, we have kind of a north-south, large standing hill. And that's, that's what we found in there, we were able to dig. We didn't hit any ledge in this valley. Here, and we didn't have any ledge in the back.
Went down ten or twelve feet or so?
We had a small excavator, the access here was pretty difficult, but we had a mini excavator perform the work, he was able to get down easily eight feet for his side machine.
So, and then there was no, there's no other place where this report may live?
No. Well, I'm trying to find, I did speak to a colleague that had helped us to see if she might have some of that information, but my records are all gone.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's one of the things that we've had some issues in the past where initial idea was that it was a tight soil, or it wasn't a tight soil, but then when they actually went out there to the site, it was different. And so they had to change their site and adjust the depths for groundwater. The key, the main thing is the groundwater, because you have to stay. You have to stay above that, and so we would definitely want to see some kind of testing in there.
Do you remember where the groundwater was?
It was just below the interface of the B and C horizon, which is, again, typical what you're gonna find for.
Which is about how deep?
It's gonna be about thirty inches, plus or minus. Thirty-six, it'd be kind of depending on, really what drives it, I was talking about, people won't listen to science stuff, but as you get deeper, that, particularly in glacial till, the deeper you get, the tighter the material's gonna be, because what happens?
More understandable.
Glacial action, you have more and more weight on top of it, and that's gonna get more and more compact. more and more compact. So what happens, if you find seasonal high groundwater, is gonna be, you'll get through the A and B horizon, no problem, and then it's gonna get to a point where there's too much water flowing through it, it's gonna be elevated kind of in that soft top of the C horizon.
Okay.
Okay, so that type of material, you know, you could find it as, as deep as 48, or you could, if it's really tight, you'll find it right below the B horizon, which is, you know, gonna be about 18 inches in this type of material.
Something that, something that I was going to ask the board to consider on this is to have the backup testing made a condition of the subdivision approval, a condition of the certificate of vote, so that as work progresses in grading out the road, to do that testing and confirm that it's consistent with the standards that he's reported, so we don't have to have, have him go back out and retest something that they already did test and took their, he's, he's giving you his engineer certification that he did the work, and these are the, this is the data that he generated.
When you did the testing? Last year?
No, 2015.
So the, the company may not have the data?
We were the company that did it.
You are the company.
We went out there with a small excavator, performed deep hole tests.
Okay. I thought maybe the different company did it.
No, no, that would have been easy. Wouldn't be happening, obviously.
Yeah, I think we can talk about that. We've, and we just did one where we had a building over where they were putting a system, so they had to wait to rip the building down to test the soil, so that's something that can be done as long as, I think we would probably have conditions that no construction would occur on either lots one or two, one and two, or eight, until the soil tests show that it works, because it may need to get bigger and it would lose the buildable area.
I was envisioning it happening before you are even breaking ground for foundations as part of an instructional...
Once the road is in and it's easy to get to the places, is that what you're...
Yeah, we're gonna have a machine there, so that makes sense.
A lot of piece of equipment on site.
Right.
Be able to, I mean, it's not gonna take half a day to perform that test.
And reproduce a report to them?
Yeah.
Well, we have DHP there to...
They're the ones that are your health agent. We're doing the same thing.
Okay. Next one is number five. As reported in the stormwater report, the applicant used rainfall intensities from TP40 per the Mass DEP Stormwater Management Handbook. However, this data is over 50 years old and has been superseded by NOAA Atlas 14, providing a more accurate representation of current rainfall intensities. BHP recommends that the applicant revise the hydrocat and rational models to reflect just more recent rainfall data.
Okay, so this, it was a little bothersome in the fact that, you know, the town produces standards and the state produces standards on which type of data they use. And that's what we used, performing the work, performing the calculations and balanced the site based on that data. And then to have a subsequent standard applied or use of, you know, subsequent different data to use, I'm just gonna push back a little bit, and I don't, you know, if the town wants to address or Mass DEP wants to update their standards using this data, that's fine, but right now, we submitted the information based on your requirements, not on some other data.
Does it, does our submission rig specify the magnitude of the rainfall?
So it does two things. For the sizing of pipes, it references a rational formula, using, and it has a specified 5.4 inch rainfall. And then secondly, it, it's just through reference, it goes to the Mass Stormwater, Mass DEP Stormwater Management Handbook, which is what we use, that references TP40, so.
That hasn't been updated?
It hasn't. It's just our stance that this is a matter of engineering judgment. You know, the Mass Highway Manual also hasn't updated what Ashville Manual they reference, but if there's a newer reference out, it's just common sense that you use the latest one, and NOAA Atlas does specifically say that their data supersedes the TP40 data, and it is more conservative to use a newer data, given the higher intensity of storms that we've had in recent decades.
And that's typically what we, we have been using that, the new NOAA data, in the last, I think, three applications.
You have been using it?
We should probably make a note.
Well, that's, yeah, like I said, it's unfortunate that you have other consultants coming in and performing the work based on your standards.
I agree.
Then you're being told to use a different story as part, post, posthumous.
I guess my question about the calculation, was it close? Like, is this a concern that it might not work out?
Well, the goal on any, any drainage calculation is, is to balance the site. So what, what'll happen, okay? We looked at it for three different design events based on the TP40 values. And they give you an inch of rainfall intensity, and they give you a storm type, which is based on your, your region. And so you look at the pre-development, you say, okay, this is where the water flows during a rain event, and based on the topography of the site, and potentially the topography, in our case, the topography of what's coming off of the site. You look at the theoretical flow rates of what you're gonna see at an analysis point, and then you're gonna do some work, you're gonna change or alter the surface conditions, and then you're gonna now analyze, put in some infrastructure to, to slow down or moderate the peak flow from having more impervious surfaces. Or changing the surface from wooded area to a lawn. And then we're gonna size that infrastructure so that we try to mimic as best as we can the precondition for those design events. The worst case scenario, the 100-year, the 100-year event, it's a statistical event, it's not, is to analyze and make sure that the infrastructure doesn't fail, that even the thing doesn't overtop. So what'll, what'll happen is if we look at the different values, I looked at briefly what those values are for this area. The smaller events are relatively close. The 100-year event, I think, is about an inch of rain more than the 100-year event. So what you're gonna see is you're gonna see more water in the pre-development, and you're gonna see more water in the post-development. So now it's a matter of how do I rebalance the best I can that drainage basis to make sure everything works. So, you know, as part of that analysis, you end up spending a lot of time, you know, particularly here, on how you manage that outfall, so that you can, it gets kind of difficult, if you can imagine that, all right, I got a low-flow event, how do I balance it? And then I have a high-flow event, how do I balance it? So you spend a lot of time moving those orifices around or trying to figure out how to make it work. And then, and that's the standard that we've used, and it's the standard that's referenced. It's not wrong, it's just the standard that was referenced. I mean, other towns, just in my experience, other towns have referenced the Cornell paper, which is a paper that took more data from TP40 and updated it. And that's, some towns are specific, they require that, a problem will design to that, that standard. But unfortunately, it's just an issue where you're pretty specific about the rules that you want to follow, and here we are.
All right. What do you think?
My next one. This is number nine. Based on the grading plan, there are areas where significant grade change is proposed. Lot five and six sit down approximately eight to 10 feet from the proposed roadway grade. Lots three, four, and seven are approximately 10 feet higher than the proposed roadway grade. BHP recommends that this grading be reviewed to confirm that access to the lots will be feasible. Per our conversation with Summit yesterday, they stated that their approach was to achieve a best mix between cut and fill based on the lot elevations. We agree that this is a reasonable approach. We just recommend indicating the maximum slope that each driveway would be to confirm that this approach yields reasonable grading.
What we've done in the past on that is we've asked for like rough grading for a typical, whatever it is, 24 by 42 foot square of a house.
Okay.
With the grading around it, so that it, it also comes into effect when you're doing your stormwater pollution prevention plan, you gotta look at what your alteration area's gonna be. So it'd be part of preparation to SWIP as well. So we'd wanna see full...
Are you looking for that each individual lawn or just the ones that are...
I would do it for, I guess we do it on a plan like this, and just make a grading plan showing how you're gonna grade the lots.
Because some of those, particularly these ones, you've got, you know, whoever decides to develop these particular houses, we showed them kind of normal, some of those, you have some, a lot of opportunities of where you'd like to put the house.
Yeah, that's why it's a typical thing, you're never gonna know whether they're not gonna want to put it up in the corner or down close, but at least...
Right.
When you're looking at the design for erosion and sediment control, that kind of thing, you can see that there's an amount of impervious and an amount of alteration. Oftentimes, what I like to look at is see how you do the cutting down of the trees, because some developers go in and they wipe out everything within 60 feet of the road so they can work easily, or they, there are others that save as much as possible, even up close to the road.
Create, create.
And then there are some spots, if you're in a cut-fill situation, you may not be able to save any of the trees because you're cutting on one side and filling on the other.
On the erosion sanitation control sheet, you can see this, we showed clearing at, at the limit of the grading.
Right.
You know, that's where we showed erosion controls, we showed the limited clearing, at least for the, for the construction of the actual roadway, actually individual lots naturally, right, the, how they chose to develop.
Your, your standard rules and regulations don't specify a percent slope for driveways, but I've heard some concern about the steepness. Do you have a percent slope that you, as a general, were looking for, so we can make sure, and you can give that detail on the...
No, I don't, so I think we've got up to 14, 15 percent, so you're gonna need to get any higher than that? I mean...
No, I mean, part of that, so just, we talked about the cuts and fills, so there is, you know, cut on this side of the roadway and there's fill on that side of the roadway. And the hill does come up, but it's conceivable that someone could easily do a drive under garage and half that cut, or most of that cut would go away, and have a very flat, flat driveway. And you accomplish it another way by, you know, pushing, in this particular lot, maybe you push the house farther back, whatever their scenario is, now you have a chance to elongate the length of the driveway to accomplish that. But I don't see, in this particular site, where even a 14 percent driver was really required. These ones here with a spill on the other side, these lend themselves pretty well to a, you know, at-grade garage, fill in the front of the house, and then you have a walkout back. You know, so it's, the road, when we went through the design, the mass fill is pretty well-balanced within 1,500 yards of cut to fill. And then the other intention was not to make an extreme on one side or the other, so someone doesn't have to do 14 percent roadways, or driveways, to access the road. So we tried to balance that as best we could and make it practical for the future owners of those lots.
And are you building spec house, or what's, how are you building out the buildings? Are you waiting to have a buyer and work with an architect to get one, a building that fits there, or are you... I mean, the key is, I don't care whether it's an architect, the developer, the engineer, but the building should blend into the site like you're talking about. It's exactly what we're looking for, is that. You have a drive under where you need a drive under, but if the people on the low side want to have a drive under, that just doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense. So there's gotta be some control somewhere, and that, I'm wondering where that control is gonna be.
We haven't, hadn't made the decisions yet on how to actually proceed forward with the development, whether to build specs or to do custom. My expectation is it's gonna be custom, so it'll fit a house specifically to the lot.
Good. What were you doing there?
Sorry, that was, that was the end of our comments that are still not resolved. So BHP just expects your favor and response of speech to the comments.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more questions from the board? Thoughts?
I just had one, what was the comment about the frontage? Was the, there was something about not, the frontage not being appropriate, but it seems that it is okay?
It wasn't the frontage in particular, just that once the easements are taken into consideration, the building was an effective lot width or below the minimum dimensions required. I don't have the specific detail.
You mean subtracting away the easement?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Our bylaws don't reduce the...
Yeah, don't do that.
...widths or frontages because of that.
Okay. So you'll work with BHP on this?
Yeah, no, what we'll do is we'll make the appropriate provisions as well as provide a, probably an itemized response for BHP and any other letters we receive, as well whatever dialogue we have with DPW and sewer department. And, and the board.
Sounds good, so, all right. Okay, now for the butters. If anyone has any questions or comments, you're welcome to speak at this time, give your name, so we can log who's speaking.
Yes, I'm Joan DeBoe, and I live on the house where the right of way is, yes. And I have several questions. The first one, who is the developer?
Mallon Brook Realty.
Who is it? Is it Mr. Ali or is it Ms. Faragad?
It's Scott Goddard and...
Is Mr. Ali, he's in my front yard, I want to make sure it's not him.
I don't know.
That's some builders.
He's the one that did the hotel.
He's done some affordable housing projects.
He actually did that newest circle project. The newest circle project we're referencing.
Okay, so that's, I just wanted to know who it was, because they both of them were there in my front yard. And I want to know why he's there. The second thing is, I have a shed, obviously, that I've kept it on for 60 years that you're going through. Are you going to compensate me for that? My lawn has made my sand's coys. What happens with that situation? I have a light pole in the front of my house sidewalk. How close is it gonna be to the, to the front of my house, that, that road?
This road is gonna be, if you project the existing pavement, you have a little bit of a rounding, you know, so that, that's gonna be incorporated on the edge of the pavement, be the limit.
But how close to my actual house is, is the sidewalk and the road? How many...
There is, we're requesting a waiver for a sidewalk.
How close to the pavement is that?
How close to pavement is my whole front yard? Because my entire house is being stranded by you. So I want to know how much. I want to know exactly.
I used a scale or a tape measure?
I, I could, I could respond in a legal, in a legal sense. The, the, her, her lot line will remain exactly where it is now in relation to the town's right-of-way.
But is it low and steep?
We're not, we're not changing...
There's gonna be a road there.
We're not changing the width of the right-of-way, but a portion of that right-of-way will now have the road behind it.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, that's not my, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking where the tar is gonna be for the road. Is it, right now, it go, it looks like a little driveway in front of there. Is it gonna continue to go that way, or is it going to go...
Is that house outlined to scale?
Yes, it is.
So how wide is that? It looks like it's about the width of the house.
I think we know, we just don't know what the actual measurement is. You see the corner of the brown building there? We want to know how far that is from the...
No, I understand that, unfortunately, I didn't come...
Built by permission by the town, allowed at the time, so she wants to know why he's gonna encroach on your building now.
Well, the trouble is, is that...
Give us a scale.
...there's some attachment on the building. Her lot line is staying as her lot line, there's no change that...
That's right.
Access that's been there, that she's been able to use for years, is now gonna become an access, a road. So I don't know what the setback is.
So the building's just wanting to get a scale.
How would they allow for it supposed to be built initially if it encroaches on a town road that wouldn't go?
It's, it's off, it's set off a certain amount, but it's not a big amount.
I mean, it looks like it's about the same distance to the back lot line as it is inside.
This is why I'm hesitant to say something, okay? Quarter mile around scale would be...
Scale is kind of...
Yeah, well, but we're still looking, we're talking about a scale from a drawing that has some stretch in the thickness of the lines, so it, I mean, it's basically, it's less than 10 feet, I would assume, but...
Less than 10 feet? Unbelievable.
Okay, you want this, this is a little bit...
That's disgustingly scummy.
It's about 25 feet.
Oh, is it 25?
From the edge of pavement to the corner of the house.
Oh, right, edge of pavement.
So my entire front yard?
25. Well, yes.
Yes, it is. Don't lie, it is.
It is. No, I'm trying to think of it, yeah, because you're, I was thinking your building was turned a little bit, but it's not.
This is a slight rotation, so that this corner of the house is closer to the right-of-way than this end of the house by your garage. You can see there's a...
So am I gonna have a fence in my entire front yard up against my house? Because you're gonna have to put one.
Why would we have to put a fence on your property?
Because you're gonna be taking my entire yard.
Okay, well, let's, let's try to keep questions. So you have, you have concerns with like...
I have concerns with the light pole.
Well, light pole, the light...
No, that I purchased my own.
Oh, you have a... Oh you have a for your driveway.
I have a light pole yeah I have a sidewalk I mean so I'm essentially my property doesn't matter because.
Well no your your property matters but I think the activities that you've been doing are have been on the town's right of way.
I haven't been doing anything I bought my my laws died and I had I've lived here forty years and my they owned it we've owned it for sixty years so.
And I agree and I but I think what you have to look at is where the property line is what is your property that you have control over and what is the town's right of way that was placed there seventy years I don't know how many years ago for future development which this is that future development so it's it's a hard thing to see but if well they I I'm not sure how how it can be easily resolved because you own a certain amount of land and the town has the rest and if it had come up twenty years ago and there might have been.
It did and they had lawyers say no way has this ever happened and then it just got under the it just went and no one could do anything with the town and we kept having this happen and it happened and then my husband and I we didn't get a lawyer and we didn't get this done and this is what's happened and it's disgusting and it's.
I'm sorry.
I'll put it all on Facebook and you can see it all.
I'm sorry you didn't you didn't you didn't get what done what is.
What were you going to do?
We I didn't have a lawyer to be able to do what other people have been doing.
Which is.
Which is.
To acquire the land from the town I mean.
No to to not allow this to happen since I've been paying taxes on that shed for the town for all these years.
Well where's the is the shed on your property man?
The shed is in.
That is on the right of it.
In central main.
It's.
The shed on the town on the.
No one told them to move.
It's called adverse possession.
Yeah unfortunately you can't do adverse possession against the town.
I know.
That would be that would be an easy solution to the whole.
We can offer a fence there.
Well I mean that's I think we're at the point now it's not going to stop the project because you've had something in the right of way for sixty years it doesn't seem right doesn't seem fair but we're at the point now where we're going to try to make it as best that can be done and do you have certain things that you think could be improved and a fence is a possibility.
Oh I think that my shed you could replace my shed.
Relocate a shed.
I'm not looking for a big thing I'm just looking for you know a basic place to put my lawn mower I think that I could have my light pole pushed closer to my house I would like fencing behind my yard and on the side of my yard between all this new development because my entire backyard is going to be developed now for that number one slot that's behind my house next to my house is going to be developed so I want a fence between our house.
So like a fence or trees or a fence.
No I want a fence.
Well I think that when you develop a lot one that's possible.
You know I just want to.
Well and that's why we have a public hearing so we can listen to what you want those don't seem to be unreasonable requests.
Or better yet because my property is now destroyed and the value of it when they see what's going to happen there's no frontage at all by my house that's what I want take it.
That they're writing things down we can't do much more than that but it will fall and we will follow through on these suggestions and they'll address whether they can do a sidewalk move or a light pole move but we hope that.
You know I'm saying it's very reasonable I don't have a problem with the developer not that I like it but I understand people and stuff people and this is what they do in life but I don't think that I should have to be hurt by this and the property who's going to buy my house no one's going to want it nobody.
How much are these houses going to be worth the houses that would be built in this lot?
At least half a million.
Okay that's a good comp to be next door.
At least half a million down when he's getting your rent.
What?
I'm sure they'll be larger than the typical houses.
All right any other yep.
You mentioned that this road.
Forget your name.
Ken Twist from Iowa was also been here sixty-five years and you mentioned Western Circle was a proposed area for development to go in behind it now just because you have a road that stops a gentleman could have said I want this land to put a house on my my farm because it's all filled down below and put a driveway in so it doesn't mean that Western Circle was built for an extension that was just where the road stopped am I correct?
Well in actual when they did the layout at the time they were forty-foot road right of ways and that's what they left there as a as an access.
To the property.
Right but they didn't put the required hundred and twenty feet of furniture to make it a separate lot so when you see that they left enough space to put a road in.
Yes.
But not enough space to be a formal lot to kind of it indicates that it was for a road extension.
Okay it indicates what does it say?
It doesn't require no and it's never written anywhere that it's required but it does because it's more narrow than would be required for frontage for a lot and it would be hard to be a lot but we did actually try to get a couple of people when this was up for sale.
You're saying this frontage on the land from Magnus land all the way here.
No just just to the corner.
Just here.
That's all the frontage there is right.
Okay now we have other issues here one is with this proposed development I provided pictures of developments in Weston Circle that all have sidewalks and they go to the end of the road that's it especially a good friend of mine Elliot Freeman built Lost Oak that Lost Oak he put all of the developing you also made him put in the road the curb cuts asphalt and granite sidewalks and everything before you even bring a truck there to build the house so we wish if they do that to do the same thing make sure the road's finished before they put one house up we also have an issue here with the land here which is going to encroach on the Magnus property now at one meeting someone on the board said maybe we'll take it by eminent domain you can't do that it's private land and that's recorded in your meeting someplace then from there we're offering to sell that frontage to the builder so he can get this free.
Sell what frontage?
That corner.
Oh that okay.
Because his land is back here town don't own this.
So who it looks like there's two property owners there?
Oh no the zickle does not apply because of he's on the road but we imply him who the encroachment is on this corner which shows your paperwork now we're willing to sell this to them for fee or trade the frontage here and I think so we would have frontage here so they make sure that they'll build it here now they'll probably say no no we just want to be excused from that well it would be like I might as well go to Mr. Vespi and say I'm going to go driveway right over your land but you can't do that I put a driveway over your land no it's my land this here encroaches on her land by approximately twenty-something feet so I think he should look into the Magnus getting her land approved or they approve buying this because it's encroachment and I don't like it and the sidewalk thing I think got to be a sidewalk also the playground.
So you think there should be a sidewalk?
Yes there should be.
And where's it connected to?
For safety for kids and also if they're opening a walking path for more children let's have some safety anyways here or anyway let's go down here to the park I mean woodland field if you want to call it that it's not a playground okay so you're going to have the kids go from here what a half mile a mile away walk all the way down to the field I don't think so if they want to provide woodland park with playgrounds or something else that may be a consideration too if you want to improve things but the way it is now we'd like to see compensation for this here and we've written up a thing in the packet we gave to everybody and what we're looking for and what terms we're using.
I'd like to I'd like to see this twenty-foot.
I guess.
Property here.
So.
Is that here?
That twenty-foot encroachment what's the encroachment?
Well the encroachment is right here because he needs a twenty-foot twenty-five foot setback from the road to your property he's on our property with his setback is twenty-three point seven two feet he cannot build the road in this corner because the Magnus land is there so he wants relief from that by the way which he told you on the old paperwork the first map it was on there it disappeared from the second one they just forgot it so we won't worry about that but you know things are different here now this here with all this engineering they still don't do number four so why has that changed and you know the sidewalks you made other people do it you might as well do it you got the parks you know it said instead of play area or a field or a park well a playground is more than just a field so and I my opinion is the town owns it here we own here even crossing our land we want compensation.
Who's you're not are you and a butter or who's?
Yes he's in Magnus.
That's our land it's his land.
Yeah I wish he was he wants to buy the whole thing that's his deal too.
All right well you've heard this so I I don't know that we're going to come to an answer on that I that's kind of that's all new tonight so if we could think about that this is going to be continued public hearing to a certain probably beginning of February sometime we're going to continue on but it'll give the developer proponents a chance to review it and make comments and for us to review the packet that you gave us and then we'll talk about it again at the next one.
Would you be getting back to Ms. Magnus and myself in writing?
Probably not we would probably be talking about it at the next hearing when this hearing is continued.
Okay so will we be notified in writing for that hearing?
We will tell you when we when we close or we'll probably continue this hearing and say it's going to be continued to February fourteenth at whatever time and then that's when it will be continued to and then we'll discuss those issues then.
Okay you'll know you'll know tonight.
Yeah you'll before the meeting you know you will know.
At the next meeting would that be the closure of the subject or we don't know?
It matters if they say oh yeah we'll agree to it we'll buy it then it's closed if they say no he doesn't know what he's talking about and then we'll have to talk about it some more but right now I don't know how it's going to play out.
Okay so you don't think any legal counsel next meeting?
I don't think so but I would never stop someone from spending money.
Okay I'm just well.
Can I just ask him a question?
They're going to be paying they're going to show me money.
Can I just ask him a question about the A and B drawing differences that you're here's here's the two drawings you're just wondering what the you're talking about this corner here?
Yeah that corner there and that corner there.
And what's the difference between these two?
These are the same.
Oh they okay I thought you were saying.
The town land stops at this section here.
Yeah.
Okay this is private land to be built to make a profit correct?
Yeah.
I hope so anyways because the rules have changed from forty feet to fifty feet they're encroaching on this part of Magnus land so.
You're still stopping at that point.
Yes you are.
How well.
Well it doesn't show right here.
What do you?
It's the same right here hey can you read this?
What is that?
Through the chair through the chair.
That's on the old plans which they didn't put in the new plans.
Which what are you what are you pointing to?
Right here section four which plus a waiver for this section between this and that but existing right of way.
The right of way width of fifty feet you're looking for a waiver of that.
Yes.
And the waiver that I you're requesting that because that access width right now is only forty feet and you don't own either of the two sides so that's all you can use is that why you're going is that the way.
That seems to me that's not approaching.
Requested because that's all the lane you have?
Yes we're asking for the waivers because we are not encroaching on her property we were asking to build the road using the forty feet that's that exists.
No you're asking for forty-five feet instead of fifty if you read what you wrote here I think you wrote it anyways.
Well I think what they're proposing is is they're going to stay within that existing right of way that existing.
Forty feet.
And they're going to keep everything in that forty feet.
Yeah that's okay that's a town area right here okay and after that.
And then it's going to widen out to fifty feet.
Gradually.
No they can't.
On their property.
Where they own it as long as it's going to widen out as as much as they own and can widen it that's where it's.
Yeah but only fifty feet correct?
Yes.
So they want to keep the center line of the road correct?
Yeah.
So that's five feet on each side well the problem is they encroaching her lands this corner because they.
But they're going to hold it they're not going to they're not going to bow out until they get past the corner of the property like that's what.
It shows right here that they're going straight to her property.
They're going right to the corner and then after they get past her property that's when they're starting to increase at least that's what I think it looks like.
When you get to her property right here you're going to go in on angle.
The the dark section is the road right that's the twenty-two foot road?
Yeah but that's a matter easement matters.
This is the pavement.
Yeah that's a matter.
This this dark line is the existing forty-foot right of way for Westland Circle.
That's right.
Magnus's property.
Yeah.
Comes from that corner.
That's right.
Out at an angle.
Right.
So what happens at this short interface?
Yeah.
So behind the the view property they widen out to the fifty feet right of way.
Exactly.
All right but that little corner right there because it's owned by Magnus there's no taking or any proposed work on their property you can't meet a fifty-foot right of way width for that distance.
You can't you can't meet fifty feet.
That's correct.
Right so guess what we're going to sell you the land you can't beat it.
That's why we're requesting the waiver.
Well I don't want you to get a waiver I'd rather take the why can't we make some money if he's going to make money off that?
Well it's something to consider but what we're trying to do is implement the regulations as they stand in the law in the in the town's regulations so what they say is that you have a fifty-foot right of way.
Yes.
If he doesn't have he's only got forty feet to work with so that's the best he's going to do.
No no he has all forty-five fifty feet whatever you the town has forty feet right?
Yeah.
He has this land here so the new road is fifty feet so you're allowing him to say nah you don't have to build fifty feet we'll let you go to forty-five there why so he can make money?
He doesn't own the property so.
He can buy the property.
Right well if you could put a couple of points together on why we shouldn't issue that waiver I mean basically it just.
Hey I'll put a lot of points together but we'll tie this up as long as we have to sell it.
Well I don't know that it'll tie it up but.
You don't think so?
I don't I said I don't know that it will but what we want to do is we want to have the facts that we can use if you can give us some good facts about why not to grant the waiver.
So and our off a little corner?
Yeah.
Just a little tiny thing for like eight bucks and then give it to you you take you buy that for Beverly Ridge.
Go on.
That little corner.
Yes.
Yes Joan DeBog again my my question is I know we talked about this back at the select meetings meeting when this land went through and he wanted to buy it whatever at the corner of Westland Circle and Davidson Road right on the corner before when you're going to you know extend the road that is the most dangerous place and the police said they looked at it but they don't know what's happened there there have been so well they do but there's been so many accidents from the people coming from Davidson Road to go around the Westland Circle corner we've put mirrors on that telephone pole you want to change there's been at least twenty-five thirty accidents there with our neighbors.
Is there?
UPS trucks everything and now you're going to have a road on the front of our yard which I'm very fearful for for my twelve-year-old son but I'm also fearful of other people that are not living there I feel like there needs to be and I'm just saying this for the record we should have a yield sign or something at that corner because to go across like that and down you're going to have deaths I'm telling you right now happens we see it every day it's disgusting and we took and the police were supposed to look at it they said it's fine.
Okay I think what we're going to have have you addressed or looked at that intersection at all?
It's very dangerous and I'm worried about the new people living there it's not favorable yet if they have children.
Well but what we're what we're trying to see is whether if our police chief is he said he had no issues with this so we may want to ask but we may want to ask him again and see what his thoughts are if there's an easy way to trim back some trees or do something like that when these guys are out here doing some work it's possible.
Or there could be or there could be an island little island put there so nobody goes over what you're saying is people drive on the wrong side of the road?
Yes.
That's what you're saying okay so.
Yeah when they go around that big corner.
They go they go on the opposite side of the road yeah.
On the opposite side of the road there's been so many accidents and now they're going to continue down into that property very dangerous and I just want I don't want to get killed.
Where are they coming from?
Davidson.
It's coming up it either comes up Westland Circle hill or it's going around Davidson Road to go down the hill now you're going to continue in our front yard and it's just going to go and then someone's going to come and kill her it's awful.
I'm just wondering I see the layout I'm just is this a kaiju from someplace else?
No that's.
There's no signs we put mirrors up for years and years and then the town takes them down because.
Well they have to approve signs.
Because they don't live there they don't understand the danger.
Well we can ask we can ask the police chief and find out what he thinks would the D P W be familiar with that with.
Yes because they take them down they. Yes, because they take them down, the, the mirrors on the whole.
All right, would we, would they be helpful to give us good feedback, not just take down that mirror?
I don't know, they just take them down, so.
Thank you.
All right, well.
I just, that's just a concern, I never.
Can we, no, that's a reasonable, that's a traffic concern, that's reasonable.
Given that we're adding traffic to the intersection, it could be signed or reconfigured in some way.
All right, if we cut the chalk, please.
Hold on. So, just in response to, to that comment, if you look at the layout of the road, there's a stop sign that we're proposing, have installed at the intersection of the new road with the existing intersection of Davidson and Westland.
Stop sign on your road?
So, so for our road, so we will put a stop sign in, and Andy has already confirmed the site distances for vehicles sitting at that stop sign are perfect to be able to see that there's traffic coming from either direction. So, you would not expect that there would be any traffic hazard as a result of traffic coming, coming out of the cul-de-sac.
Would there be a reason to look at, maybe put a stop sign on Davidson Road?
There's all sorts of options, but I think we need to have the police and DPW guys look at it.
Okay, 'cause now that it's a different situation, maybe there's a different stop sign.
There's a different traffic.
Different pattern.
And you'll have the town will look at it, and when you're talking to the DPW folks.
Also, you know, when you want a stop sign, you know, we need to know that which traffic is going in.
Stop sign on Davidson.
Right, 'cause, and consider this like a throughway or something.
Yeah.
You could make that way through and make Davidson always stop, with, with something there to prevent people from driving on the wrong side.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a lot of options, but we can look at it, I mean, if it's a stop sign.
If it's just a stop sign, we might just move it, you know.
But, and the town has those, we can get that done, but it's something to look at, 'cause we're gonna have, what do you, did you have a traffic generation, what is your number? Do you do a trip generation?
Relatively small.
Did you request that as a waiver too, as the traffic study?
I thought there was a limitation on what signs. I'll double check.
You know, it's just trip generations, we, we're not looking for a whole traffic study, it would just be, we got this many, and most everyone's gonna be taking a right going out there.
Yeah, it's kinda, the neighborhood is a, there's essentially three ways to get to where they're going down Route twelve, so, those eight lots, whatever your trip generation is per, per single family home, that's what you're adding to this whole network.
And down to here.
Right. Presumably, most people would go directly down, Westland Circle, and then come to Woodland Street, there's a controlled intersection at, at Route twelve.
Okay, any other comments from?
Yeah, there we go.
I'm Sarah on CPN, and if you look at the two houses there in color, you've got the zigles and the maguses, I live one house down, so I'm.
This way?
Yes, right there.
Okay.
So I'm just the third person that borders on this. Some questions I have, one question is, how will the water pressure be affected for those of us at the top of the hill with this project coming? The water pressure's not great, because it has to go down the hill and be pumped back out for us. You've talked about adding, what is it?
Pumps at the houses?
Individual pumps in the house.
Individual pumps. How is that gonna affect those of us that are already without individual pumps?
I was gonna have to talk about the loop.
The water pressure, the water pressure's not good.
Can you answer that water pressure question?
Yeah, so there, there should be a minimal impact for the water pressure, so when they did the, the study, they performed what's considered called a fire flow test at this hydrant, or this intersection. So they measured static pressure, so what you experienced at your house, just based on whatever the elevation difference is from your house, 'cause you're closer to the water tower, I believe elevated, you're vertically higher than where that hydrant is, and then they did a. Pardon? It is relatively flat, it's just.
Words would be higher.
Yeah, exactly, and then they performed another one actually downhill. Tatum Howard has a model, they're the consultant for the whole system for the town, West Boylston, and then they were able to model, if we ran this extension, the, the primary concern is if you had a fire or any kind of event where you're opening up a hydrant that would drop the pressure, that's gonna happen. If it happened today, they open up the hydrant to fight a fire, everyone's gonna experience a water pressure drop. Small residential development with not a lot of demand, you're not gonna see that, because people collectively aren't taking that much water. So the, the second piece of this was, in order to get the theoretical thousand gallon per minute flow rate, Tatum Howard recommended extending and, and looping this water main back onto Lawrence Street. Okay, so there's a water main that comes off that tower that comes down into your neighborhood, and there's another water main that comes down and services Lawrence Street.
Another water main goes down to the center of town and comes back uphill, it doesn't go from the tank to our house?
I, I, I recognize that, sir, and just, it branches from the tank in two opposite directions, is my understanding of it. And in order to help accommodate flows based on the demand kind of across the system, they wanted to loop this, so you'd get better flow rate. It's not necessarily gonna address the pressure or the poor pressure that you're experiencing in your home, but it's certainly gonna help the neighborhood, so that if there's a demand, a higher demand for fire flows in different parts of this networking system, it's gonna be able to, to take water from one side and get it to the other side more efficiently.
So it seems the answer is that it's not gonna change your pressure, but it's gonna give you more water.
If there's a fire, yes, I'm excited.
Well, but it's possible, I mean, if, I don't know what your insurance company is, or what your current rates are, but if you have a situation where your insurance company has a certain amount that you have to pay, if you have a thousand gallons, or actually five hundred gallons per minute available, versus a thousand gallons versus fifteen hundred gallons per minute, if you have more water available, your rate could go down on your insurance, which might be the only benefit you get out of this.
Well, it can go up if your water line goes down.
But the way that they're looping, a loop can pretty much only improve the situation, 'cause it's bringing water from a different area that's not there now, so it's gonna improve it. It's not creating a new standpipe or a new water tower to make the pressure any better, but it's allowing you to get more water from other locations.
Another question about drainage, how is drainage gonna be affected from property which is downtown from the development? Not only for me, but it's on one side, but, but the other drainage, which seems to go into wetland area, conservation area? So, how, what, how is the drainage going to affect both me and the wetlands?
Okay, so. What's that?
Wasn't sure who was making the comment.
The third house lot. I, I didn't catch.
It's not in color, but it's there.
Invisible house.
So.
Invisible house.
So your residence is up around here, yeah, so the, the effect of the drainage to your property is, is not gonna occur, 'cause what happens is the grade goes downhill and across. So actually, the water that falls out of the sky onto your property and then runs off, actually goes on the, through the Magnus property, and then subsequently onto this property, and then back onto the Minish property. So, your first question is, this isn't gonna have any impact on your property with, with stormwater. The second part of the question is how to, what's being done to protect wetlands that are actually subsequently farther down. The subdivision regulations require what's called, considered stormwater management or stormwater treatment, so what it does is it takes into account changes of the surface, i.e. pavement and use, and then they, when you build your infrastructure, you put in what's called best manager practices. Those best manager practices include a deep-sump catch basin, which you see in every street, in this particular case, we're going through a storm scepter, which removes more sediment from the surface water. And then lastly, to a mimic groundwater recharge from the existing condition, and provide further treatment as a stormwater basin here, that collects that water, allows anything else to settle out and be infiltrated. And then, you heard me kinda babble on earlier about managing surface water flows, so we build models to try to figure out how much water's flowing there today, and then mimic that condition based on developing the property. Again, the ultimate goal is, is reducing impact to the butters and then subsequent wetlands.
Okay, a couple more layout, um, collected. It's not perfect where we are now, but of course we've got the overhead wires, I didn't know that there was any way that one could tap into underground though, things could be worked out.
Yeah, our subdivision requirements have them putting in everything underground in this stretch of road, but not up on your stretch of road.
Also, just a reminder, the internet, supposedly, there was gonna be improvement in internet services on Woodland Street that would access the neighborhood. At present time, internet services are very slow, so just a warning, and I also would like a fence.
Actually, her property doesn't, you're way off, but.
Her property doesn't, if that doesn't touch this property.
Two hundred and something feet, right?
It doesn't actually touch.
Yeah, it doesn't touch. What's the property?
Yeah, maybe there'll be a sale on fence when they get there.
It's not anything to joke about, our, our lives have been affected by our properties, and that's not nice at all to do, because you're affecting the property, my property, and you're affecting.
Do you have a question? Do you have another question, I say you raise your hand.
I have.
Oh, different hand, sorry. Yes, give me.
I'm Sandy Clint, I live on Westland Circle, and our water pressure is lousy now, so I'm hoping that this doesn't affect us. I have a couple of questions, those big lots in the back from four to seven, is the town gonna put a stipulation on it that that can't be redeveloped in the back and more houses be added later on?
You can't do it.
We, we won't, I don't think, because right now the current regulations only allow a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long subdivision road to dead end. Guess they've got a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long road, so that's as far as they can go under our regulations.
If you can put any more houses in there?
Well, if they bought a property on Lawrence and made a connection to go through to Lawrence Street, then it could get extended, but I don't know that there's any open spots, or even that there would be a financial benefit to be doing that, but right now, that's as long as that road can be.
My next question is, you have to put sidewalks in in new development, is the town planning on adding sidewalks from the perimeter of Davidson and Westland Circle all the way down to the park? Are we gonna lose property, frontage? I mean, I was told.
The town has no plans to do, should I, has a sidewalk planned? Sidewalk is a plan that was prepared for the Open Space Committee, and we talked about where sidewalks would be improvements for the town, and be the biggest bang for the buck, and the demand here for a sidewalk wasn't raised, but at that time, there was no loop coming down and coming through it. I can't promise that it wouldn't get upgraded to be a higher standard, but there's not a lot of money in that fund anyway to create sidewalks, and sidewalks are expensive, we, the work that we did a couple of years ago, ended up, were just nine-hundred and something thousand dollars for that amount of sidewalks, and the town doesn't have a lot of money to do it anymore. So I wouldn't expect it to happen, but it's the town, and I can't make any promises with that.
This is with the complete state policy.
The focus for sidewalks has been the center of town, and along, and along, yeah, and along, and along Route twelve, where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, that's where the focus has been, I haven't heard anything about a demand for sidewalks.
Yeah, it's only for the streets busy with the schools, busy with the shopping, and the main roads, so this, I don't think so, but I don't know.
And my other issue, I, I spoke to Josh about this, is our street, Westland Circle, is in deplorable condition, it hasn't been touched as far as asphalt or anything since the sewers went in. It's cracked, it's, it's bombing in, we get more trucks up there with the construction and everything, is it the town's intention, once this is, once this project is completed, to address that?
Whether this project goes on, goes forward or not, the, you know, last year, we did, the town did, put in a lot of roads, we did, last two years, we were using the chapter ninety money.
There's, there's a list, there's a list of streets that the DPW is planning on repaving, they had a study done about the relative condition of all the roads in town, a lot of the, the worst ones have been, already been done.
Yeah.
Prospect down the hill, and a lot of those places have been done, I'll check and see if Westland is on that list, I don't recall if it was or not.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it's cracked all the way across the street.
So Westland, Westland from here all the way down to Woodland, you're saying, or all the way down to, it doesn't end, go to Woodland?
About halfway up the hill, all the way up to Davidson Road.
Okay.
The one, the one thing you could do is, you know, if I happen to see DPW director, I would put a word, you can send in a small, not to DPW director. I'm not sure enough that, as he's on.
Not sure what the rating, I'm not, not sure where the rating was, they rated all the, all the streets in categories, from worst to, to, to okay.
Yeah, Mr.?
If they were to try to develop this, the land, Westland Circle here, the town land, who rules the trees on that one? Build it, or the town?
In the existing right of way, or that existing town, they would, they'd probably do it. The developer does the work, yeah.
Okay, so, where's he parked his trucks?
On his property?
Well, we don't get into that detail, but he's probably gonna be on the side of the road till he can get a space, actually, I guess there's a, an access there, so he'd probably just park them on that right of way and do the work.
Trees, all the way around the Magnus.
They will figure it out, I don't think that'll slow them down.
Oh, okay.
But isn't it, are they required to be on their property once they can?
Yeah, they can't do it from anyone else's property, they could.
Right, and they can't all lumber on anybody else's property.
Correct, that's, but they will take care of that, that's, and if they don't, then that's a reason to make complaints.
Okay.
That's when, that's when you get your lawyer involved.
Should they have insurance against that?
Yeah.
What?
Can they build to have insurance against, and damage people's property?
Well, usually the, the guys who do the tree work are bonded and insured, there, it's not, it's not me going out there cutting the trees down, and you got some guy who knows what he's doing, and he's licensed, and he's gonna.
He has the right equipment, he's not gonna be in the wrong place.
Have you ever seen the land, you'd be a big? They'll probably get Lawrence Street.
Yes, I have a question, like, when they're gonna take the, the house down, the, the storage shed down that I have in the right of way, do I get a letter saying you have to have all your stuff out of it by a certain date? I, I just wanna be courteous and take it out, not have one day to do it, you know what I mean?
Do you, can I encourage communication here, can you guys, after the hearing, come up and talk to these folks, give them your name and number, exchange cards, whatever it might be, and get it addressed? We don't need to do it at a public hearing, that's just kinda neighborhood stuff.
I just work all day, and I, I just want it out.
Right, so, neighborly to be nice.
It's in everybody's best interest to have that done properly.
But their plans for basements, for this property?
I assume so, yeah, yeah, that's what they were talking about.
Houses. Yeah.
Always been under the impression that there was a lot of ledge, so.
Yeah, there's. Well, the non-existing report said there wasn't much ledge.
There's a vein here, we anticipate some, some ledge, kinda like right through that piece, like, so where we dug our testing down here, we didn't incur any, any ledge, ledge material.
Back?
Hi, I have, uh, my name is Nick Watzas, I live on Lawrence Street, and I just have, I have two questions, the first question is, what's the reason for the red line walkway?
This up here, sir?
Yeah. So.
That's something in the town's planning and the master plan, it always talks about providing ways to get around town without having to drive, so that people wanna just walk out the backyard and walk up to some place that just allows an access for people who are on Lawrence to walk down to the.
No, it's not a proposed street.
No, no, it's a, it's a walking path, that's it, and it's also gonna have the water main.
The water line too.
The water line's gonna be underneath it, so it's double purpose.
Okay, thank you, and my second question is, is there, is this it, or is there any plans for expansion?
That's the whole property?
This is it, I think you came in a little bit later, sir, but this Minish property that kinda was the original piece for the whole piece, I believe was restricted for development, and this was the only remaining piece here, so, like, like the chairman had said earlier, the only. So, like, like the chairman had said earlier, the only ever potential is the limited frontage, the limited length of the road, this is as much as we can get within the guidelines of the town, unless there was some reason to extend it, but right now it's certainly not a feasible...
What are those frontages on those far, the bigger lots?
I think those are the minimum frontages to get around, and then they...
So they couldn't split them out?
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to split, unless there was a change in the zone.
In the back there, way back?
Oh, please, Cap.
Yep?
Ellen Capeloff, I live behind on Mary Drive, and you're saying that Minnick's property is protected property? Does it go, how far to the, I say to the left, does that go?
Down to Prospect?
All the way to Lawrence.
All the way to Prospect, so like, I'm on Mary and my neighbor, Ike Cabone, borders that last, that's us.
Yeah, you're...
Maggie, it could be, yeah, Mary.
Ike Cabone?
No, that's not me, I'm down.
She's down here.
I'm down to the left, down in the circle.
Yeah, Minnick's property's behind her. Yes.
I'm down...
The southern, you're, you're off the drawing down here, right?
Correct, so why don't, if that ever, so that can't ever be built behind there at all?
Well, not by them.
I don't know, I'm not sure what's...
No, it's Minnick's property, does his property go?
If it is, if it's Mr. Minnick's property, there's a deed restriction so that it cannot be developed.
How far his property goes to it?
You gotta check the assessors. From this plan, they, they abut the Minnick property, so it's, they're not close, so there's at least the Minnick property between them and you.
If you want us to look on here.
But as far as what's on yours, yeah, you have something?
I'd be glad to have you meet with me after the meeting is over. We have a plan that shows exactly where Mary Drive is, and you can get away with it, it'll be fine. We have a plan.
You guys want to see the Minnick's property, I think there's another hole in between.
So he's got it on the plan.
It has it.
It shows, he'll show it.
It's like four units from the end of the call this one.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
Yes, this lady said that who was on your property the other day or who, the guy that built it?
No, this was, this was back in May.
Okay.
Mr.?
Ali.
No, Mr. Lawdard, and Mr. Ali was there too.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna...
I was just concerned.
Well, I'm concerned too, because this is what was proposed before all this and by casual Steve Cliff, for seventy-one loan commuters. Well, it's not going to turn into this, is it, after they get approval for the land?
Right now they're, they're proposing an eight-lot subdivision. If we give them an approval and they decide that they don't like it, then they can always do a chapter, I mean a...
Forty B.
Forty B proposal. It's always their right to do it, this is the state. That's why we want to try to make this work as best we can. They came in and said that they have no intention of doing a forty B, so we don't want...
Well, often they say they have no intention.
Well, but so far they haven't lied to us yet, so let's kind of keep it positive. Keep it positive, and we will try to make this work out the best we can.
Well, if any of you want to see a copy of what the seventy-one unit looks like, let me know.
Are there any other comments, questions?
Question, what eight there, I'm Jen, I guess I own the property, all that area.
Okay.
Are you going to level that at all? Because that's a hill. That hill goes straight up. I don't even know how you could build a house there.
There is a hill there, and like I described, you know, previously, you know, we were talking about making houses work better with the land, there's an opportunity there to be to drive under, into the house, you know, drive under garage, have an accurate entry.
But are you cutting that hill down at all?
So the, the purpose of this, of what we're doing tonight is really focused on the work related to the construction of the roadway, not necessarily the construction of the individual lots, because that can vary based on what the owner wants to do for developing their particular house or their design or whatever they have.
Because it's all up and down and up and down, and all area there, I don't know how to build it all.
There's an hole here, and then there's a saddle that goes through the bottom.
Well, but the idea is that they're planning on putting a couple of houses up in there, and I've seen them get them in tough spots. So basically they clear a, a level area and they have a steep backyard and a steep front yard. I think they're going to do a better job than that, but it's a possibility that someone wants to buy two of the lots, and then they just have one lot that's there. But right now, we're looking at, what it says, we're looking at the road access, that it's acceptable and safe and it meets the town standards for a road. How the lots get developed, we really can't get into whether he puts a drive under or a ranch. He can't put a two-family, he can't put an apartment complex up there. All he can put in is a single-family house.
Now, there is a setback requirement from that house on lot eight to the Magnus Land, correct?
Yes.
What is it?
Ten foot.
In the back? In the back of it, don't be...
I'm sure it's a ten foot, is that a side yard?
I don't know if it's side or back.
I think side.
If that's the front and that's the side.
It's not a lot.
Twenty-five on the road.
Okay, so along the whole road, it's twenty-five foot?
Ten side, so ten foot off the side, ten foot from the rear, so, and then twenty-five from the front.
Okay, so that from the fifty-foot road, it's twenty-five feet from there?
From the right of way, yeah.
Okay, that's good, that helps me out in that corner.
I just have one more, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
My question is, the developers, are you planning on taking every tree out or is it going to be scattered trees? Because it's wood, I'm just not sure yet. That's just my question.
Trying to preserve the...
Is it completely like, totally taken down? What do you do?
Okay, well, let him answer, please.
Like behind my house, that first house, yeah.
House here?
Like, yeah, so how that, that lane is cut? Are all those trees going to be cut and be law in there or doing different things? I don't know what's going on.
All right, so the, the first part, you know, a lot of the work, you know, for the purpose of this permit was related to how we're going to construct the road.
Okay, so you don't really know what's going to happen to your ground house?
No, because some of that is going to depend on what, and it is, your concern here, okay, the person that decides to develop this lot, they may choose to keep the house uptight, up to the, you know, about that twenty-five foot street line offset and the sidelines, okay, minimize the drives, in which case that vegetation would have to be removed to support the house. If they chose to slide it farther back, then...
So it's pretty behind my house technically, okay.
There's an opportunity they could reduce what they cut for driveway access to get to the housing area, so it's really...
Okay.
Is it, it's true that the house couldn't be behind her house? It's got to stay within the a hundred feet straight line back, right?
No, because it, that lot widens out, so as long as they have the a hundred and twenty foot width, it goes all the way back, it looks all the way to the rear line, so they could put that house anywhere except that they got a detention basin in the way.
Yeah, an easement or naturally low park line absence.
It could be over here. Oh, it could be back there.
So it could be that, okay.
But if they're going to put the work, well, you never know what it's going to be, but basically if someone's going to be putting the work in, extra money to spend it and send it way in the back, they're going to want to have their own privacy as well. So that's a way to kind of cover it. And, yep, in the back?
Ashley Boyatzis, I live on Lawrence Street. My question is similar to the woman up here who asked about your drainage plan for Westland Circle. What is your drainage plan in regards to Lawrence Street? Right now, the drainage problem is a problem. There's a basin next to our home, which is thirty-sixth Lawrence Street, where there is a tube of some sort that's supposed to collect water, and at least for the last thirty-five years has been filled with silt to the brim. And the town used to take care of it, hasn't in quite some time. Living on Lawrence Street, we got, my family has owned this property for sixty-plus years. We got water in the basement for the first time this year in sixty years. A week after, we put in new carpets in the basement of course Murphy's lot. Again, my question is, where we live on the slope is, we're about the, our house is not shown on that map, but we're two more places down on Lawrence Street, yes, on the downslope. My concern is all the drainage coming down through Minnick's property onto ours in terms of drainage. So what's your plan to address it on the backside?
Sure. So what I, what I described with the roadway, if you recall, this road goes downhill to a low point here and then continues uphill. So all the water that falls on the roadway is actually directed down through this valley. So if you're way out here, okay, all that water's going to get intercepted and even a, actually a portion more from that ravine divide is going to be redirected away from where your property is.
Yeah.
And secondly, a lot of this, the, the contouring out here actually redirects it here, you know, it's off the plan, but there is a bordering vegetated wetland where a lot of this water from the hill already, rather than go directed toward your property, it's actually directed towards that wetland in the back. Yeah, sure.
So because we live here, it actually does come in through here, and you can see on the map, my property has a little river next to it.
It doesn't go far.
It comes down and into the property. So I know you're saying we're way up here, but we're downhill from your development.
Yes, but so the, the way the road...
Yep, I mean, it's, I don't know if there's an easier way to say it, but basically the area that they're working on on this property is going to be draining away from your property. So where the houses and the yards are in the front yard, they're going to grade towards the road most likely. It could be a house that's set way in the back, so you may get some runoff from a building, but the driveway will most likely come in direct water this way. Their drainage system has been designed to capture the runoff from the building, the driveway and the roadway, and bring it all back towards the Westland Circle low area. So they're not going to do anything, again, it's one of those situations where there's not going to be any promise that it's going to improve it, but it does not appear, from what you've said and what our engineers reviewed, it looks like everything is being drawn, everything that's getting developed is being drawn to the east side. So I don't know that, like I said, that you can't promise that it's not going to impact you, because like you said, it just, you just got water in sixty-five, first time in sixty-five years. But it appears that it's the best option for the drainage as far as you're concerned.
And then I have another question in terms of the walkway between Lawrence Street and Westland Circle. Is the intention to pave that, and you're saying the water main will go underneath that? Is your intention to pave it, have gravel?
Gravel surface.
Gravel surface?
Yeah.
So it's a walking path, but bikes really wouldn't necessarily be able to be on it if it's gravel?
Like the rail trail?
I think they would have, bicycles would be able to use it.
Like the rail trail?
Okay.
Processed gravel.
Inch and a half minus processed gravel, so, yeah, the rail trail's probably the best equivalent.
Only not narrow, it's only going to be, what, five, six feet wide or is it...
I think it was, I forget the...
Oh, because you need access to the...
Yeah, there was, I think it was closer to ten to get a...
Gravel ten feet wide?
So the intention was to be able to get a service vehicle from the water.
From the water district.
What is your intention, what vehicle would include the nap?
The, the Water District has to have access to the, the line underneath, so they'd probably go there once in a blue moon if ever, but that's what the space is there for.
Would be DPW vehicles and water?
Water District probably, only.
It's kind of already there now because I see trucks up there because I've driven there to see what's happening.
Is there a gate proposed at the Lawrence Street end?
I think there's a gate that exists.
There's a gate that exists. Yeah, okay, that's not, so as long as you're tying into that. Is that, is that a gate? We don't want, we don't want people taking a shortcut.
No, no, I understand.
Sure.
That is a gate.
Yeah, it's not supposed to get any... Eight feet.
You mean the gate to the water tower?
Yeah.
No, at the end of the Lawrence Street, is that a gate?
Okay.
Water opening right up to K-Y-Y, huh?
No, on this side.
On Lawrence Street?
Yeah, you can go straight up Lawrence Street.
It's, it looks like it's going to be about eight feet wide for the...
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Stacy here. One of the things I'm curious about is, I commented, the young lady from VHB there was about the frontage and the easements, and if I understood it correctly, I'm sure she corrected me about the line, but she wants to know if they have, if they have more than a hundred and twenty feet of frontage and there's an easement on that property. She, I think she's asking what is going to be the difference? How much is the easement and how much is the, how much is the actual frontage? Now, is the easement inclusive in the frontage or is it two separate items?
No, I think, well, we, we kind of talked about that, the idea, and they're going to put it on the plan. The, our regulations, some towns don't allow you to use an easement as part of your frontage, but that's not what's going on, and we don't have that in our regulations. So if the frontage is required at a hundred and twenty feet and they have a hundred and fifty feet there, but then there's seventy-five feet worth of easement on there, it doesn't reduce their frontage. They still have adequate frontage for the development, but they are going to add the numbers on the plan so that we can see that there are some of them that are tight and they're going to have to kind of really squeeze in a specific building and driveway and accessway to get, to get to it.
So at the next meeting, will there be a definitive response to that request?
Yes.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is if, if the frontage goes beyond less than a hundred and twenty feet, is there a definition?
Right now, they're, it sounds like they're all okay.
Right, right, but I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah, but we don't take it away.
Asking a question about the comment that she made, that they wanted two separate, and I'm just wondering, is the easement going to be separate? In other words, like what Vinnie said, if there's a hundred feet of frontage, right, and say a forty feet of that is easement and a hundred and ten feet is actual frontage, okay, does that put that...
Does that make it illegal?
Does that make it less than a hundred and twenty feet? Okay, that's all I want to know.
Steven, correct him.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we all agree that it doesn't have to be a hundred and twenty feet of non-easement frontage, but we just protested that it's specifically, or very clearly stated on the plan, how much of the frontage is easement and how much of it isn't.
But the frontage, you know, Matt, we got it, just the frontage, that's the...
I think you're halfway there.
So I guess, I had written these down, and... What do you have for road grades, the slope of the road?
The pitch of the road, yeah, the grade of the road. If you look at sheet six, you'll have a roadway profile. Oh, you just want a number? So the, the max grade is, is six percent downhill and that's right here around this portion of the area. And then it bellies out to a vertical curve and then comes back up at two percent to the end.
So that's, okay, that's a pretty great, that's good. And then the other thing that I had was access to your stone mortar basins. Do you have acceptable access and be able to maintain, do it where...
It didn't come up as a comment, but if you look at the grading plan for that basin here, you'll see it's, it's almost like a five to one or six to one slope almost along this whole frontage. The, the intent was to try to make it look as natural graded as possible.
Right, but to get a truck down there to do maintenance in the future, is there a way to go down there? Five to one is okay, but some people go three to one and that's...
In the road, I believe it's a three to one slope here, and then on that port or this side of the basin, you'll have... Right back, you see all these? Actually, on both sides.
Seven, twelve, and twenty-one, actually, there's no bad road.
No.
Okay.
So it's, you know, you're supporting the road, and then on both sides, lot one and lot two, we, we've kind of pulled those grades as far out, again, not to make it look like a snake sticking through the ground, it was trying to, trying to mimic the existing ground. That would also help with vehicular access or maintenance access.
Right. And with the, the last thing was, there was a, is a requirement in subdivision regs about a play area or a park. I know that Park, Woodland Park is in some dire straits as well as pavement, tennis courts or the basketball court. I wasn't sure if there's some way, when you get your paving guys out there, if they go down and do some paving for the town. That might be something to talk to the DPW and the parks.
Make that part of the waiver? We'll waive it in your property?
Well, no, then we don't have to waive it, we just say that it's an in-time thing to provide. Something, something that might work. We have other ideas of what might work, but that just came to me as we were talking. You should have gotten ready.
One more question about the, the land next to Magnus. Is that road going to be above Magnus' land when the slope goes toward the land?
That's stripped.
Is the, is the road higher than their property?
Is this road higher than the Magnus' property?
Magnus is...
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, this road is, is elevated.
So the hillside there, that twenty-five feet total easement except the corner, will drain out to the Magnus' property, right?
No.
Why not?
Because there's a cross culvert proposed. At the low spot, there's a cross culvert that's proposed so that this water draining, again, through this saddle, goes underneath, underneath the road.
Yeah, but on the twenty, the whole twenty-five foot, the two hundred and seventeen feet, is it going to swell off to the front?
Yeah, there's, there's a natural pitch... Yeah, there's, there's a natural pitch of the grade that actually goes to this, in this direction as well, so, you know, the roadway itself all is self-encapsulated for the street drainage, but the berm itself, if that's what you're concerned about, you know, still intersects the existing grade and pitches to the west.
And so you're going to show and our engineer is going to check to make there's no flooding on the neighbors, no backwater from that cover.
If I, if I can add to that, the grading plan on the subdivision plans shows very clearly the, the contours to indicate a swell so that any water along the shoulder is directed within the property lines of the land that's with the subdivision down to where the stormwater management home is. So I'd be glad to show it too.
All right, yeah, and actually having communication would be good if you were willing to meet outside.
Do you want extra time?
Because we have some other things to do after this.
That's sort of right.
Any other questions, Dave?
Just one thing, I'm just curious, since that road is going to be like seven hundred and fifty millimeter feet, and I believe you said that there wasn't going to be any lights on that road? I, I, I just don't see that, to me that seems like a safety.
The town, yeah, we're, I'm pretty sure it's in our bylaws to have.
Okay, because especially at night, especially during the winter, when it gets docked at three o'clock in the afternoon, maybe thirty and a half.
We're all okay.
And some, and all the trees and somebody needs to walk down a block up there and there's no lights, black ice, all of that. I mean, you don't have to have a light pole on every single property, but you could like maybe stagger it somehow with that LED lights, but I, I think that it's important for safety is that you should have lights on that, on that road.
Okay. Any other thoughts? So we're going to be continuing this hearing. What do we have for, do we have any other meetings that night, February fourteenth?
We do have a public hearing at seven o'clock on the fourteenth, so I don't know, do you want to give them an hour, half an hour?
Who was, who was it on the fourteenth?
Senior Center.
That's the senior center.
So the senior center, oh, that's going to be a great night.
Yeah.
What's your timeframe? Could you try to address all these things? Do you think you're going to be able to get all this stuff done before that and get it to VHB to review?
Three weeks.
It's three weeks. I'm just thinking if we go instead of the.
Three weeks.
Fourteenth, put it on the twenty-eighth.
How much time does, I mean, how much time do you need to review?
I can speak for the reviewer, but I mean, I think our turnaround time for the previous review was.
Yeah, it's pretty fast.
Yeah, pretty quick. I mean, I guess how, how long do you think it'll take for you guys to respond?
I'll probably need, you know, end of next week to help, probably between communication with DPW.
Right.
Or not, if I can get in touch with them and make whatever necessary revisions, that gives you almost a week and a half review time.
Those things are small. I'll confirm with Wayne.
Okay.
So I, I know we can do it on the fourteenth, I'm just thinking that our plane board schedules, you guys are going to be here probably nine o'clock getting on the, on the docket because it's the senior, Town Senior Center and.
Valentine's Day?
Valentine's Day, so.
Oh, yeah.
We could make it the twenty-eighth also.
But I mean, the twenty eighth.
I mean, I'm just wondering what your timetable is, I mean, in the middle of the winter.
The parks.
Maybe savour to do it the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth may be the safest, I think.
I'd, I'd be okay with continuing it to the twenty-eighth.
That's fine.
That way we can make it earlier.
And then if you guys go back and forth with VHB, that's even better.
There's some more time to square it away with VHB and have a clean one.
And if you can talk to neighbors and we can have everything kind of squared away, that would, that would be good. Principal, do you have a motion?
Motion to continue until twenty-eighth February.
My office seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yeah.
I'll second.
Until later, yes.
I'll second it.
There you go. That's when they come back.
Twenty-eighth February.
Twenty-eighth of February at seven o'clock.
Seven A.M.
Aye.
Seven P.M.
I'll move.
Second, do we have a motion?
Motion and second.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you, good input.
Bentley? Bentley?
He's not coming.
Did you want to see where your house lays here?
I just want to see.
Yeah, if you want to take it out for the.
You want to take a five minute break? Get some water? Yeah, that's a good thought.
What?
No, try to believe.
Well, I had my five minute break at the beginning.
Bring your fresh ones. Play some soda.
There's a bigger one, if you want to just see.
We'll take it, but if you're thinking about that, it's sort of soccer field, like the college soccer.
Yeah, but I think it's still, but it's owned by Chief.
Yeah.
Minnick. I think so. For some reason, remember, the, the reason this came up is because this big property was all Tajin's and they broke this out and this was restricted and Minnick ended up with it and this was not restricted and it was just, it was sold off as valuable.
The reason I ask is because I live right, right here and years ago, I think it was Tajin's sister was trying to get a road between here for something.
Well, now they can't, they can't get anything up to this line, I don't know what this.
This is her property.
Okay, so you have to talk to her about that.
Oh, no, no, because she's up there anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this is all big deal anyway.
When we bought this, when we bought this property out of bankruptcy, it was carved off from the.
Yeah, the whole thing was in bankruptcy and then they broke it out, gets a value.
But.
Because it, I think it was a value thing, they, they. The property as all conservation wasn't much value, so they broke this out, which was really what they wanted restricted, and this became available as.
So this is a conservation?
Yeah, well, just for showing the warranty, it's privately owned. Yeah, and but still restricted.
I believe that what they put on it is conservation restriction, but I wish I could come up with the actual citation to the statute.
Yeah.
But you have a, you have a conservation restriction, the special statute that creates conservation restrictions. I wonder how. When they're, they're signed by the Conservation Commission and approved by the select, and it goes to the Secretary of.
Do you want to copy a list?
Signed by the, or the, you know, conservation restrictions basically would take, enact the legislature and sign on from all of those different.
This is that presentation that was up.
It would be very hard to.
Which basically, basically with a.
What, what? I've never seen.
Did they move your shed?
Okay. I've been here sixty years. It's a milk apron. It's a big, huge. It's a apron. No, just down here. No, plus, plus, I mean, it's a rack. It's what we keep everything. Right.
I was just saying, if you want to take everything out, I would say they could might, with all the equipment.
Right. It's such a wreck that's in need of, I want to see it.
Oh, yeah.
There are no plans to. Yes, and then. I'm going to believe. We have, we have, we have cars over the year to ask for their.
Okay, so.
Gary was telling me.
I mean, you're.
Gary's.
Well, with some solution because if there's no solution, it's hard to.
Right. It's not like I expected to do it.
Right, well.
It's one of the kids' neighbors. I just want to.
I didn't mean to.
If you want in the neighborhood, we have to do it.
If you want.
I don't have. Along like that. It's more. Where a house.
And then, after that is, do you want the fence to be on the other property where it's not under your control?
Yes, sir. It's good for both.
Or if you put it on your property, then you know that they're going to take it down.
Right.
But then you have to, you have to let them put it on.
I know. I never see them. I mean, if they take the property, they take our most.
You can't talk to them. I mean, we can't make them.
No. 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 Yeah, they live on. They said it's very interesting. All the.
And then we talked about it when it was first, we're saying.
No. This is separate. That's not you. That's me. Yeah.
This is why we.
Right. This is all.
If they were to spend this on, to this level, if they were going to have to turn around.
Well, maybe because he has no one. No, you're the one that has to be. His apartment is mine and his place. Oh, yeah. It's disgusting.
If you want to.
That, that landed over here. I was home when that happened. We was on the corner of the bar. Yes, because it landed here. I was home, I saw it. In fact, I drove around, we drove around and nobody was heard. No, I know, that's right. Oh, my God, it's like the house. It's this property that's. Yeah. Because I got a car.
Oh, I know, I did, but I, I mean, the, the town said they have this act, that's the town needed access to the property, which is.
That's still wrong because I had nothing to do with it, I wouldn't have a property there.
Oh, did you, did you?
Why the house was built? No, it was my, my husband's deceased. His parents owned it and they built it. And at the time, sixty years ago, they were told, oh, that's not where I was going there. So they turned.
This was Tajin's property.
The property.
Well, Tajin's property, he was never into it, and that's probably when he did that for the next forty years, but whenever, he was never into it, he liked the big old.
When they used to live here, they used to be down, there was like a little opening here, they had fires. And one time I come home. And. It flooded every time. And they had more fire, yeah, fire.
Well, that shouldn't get any worse. It may get better, but it shouldn't.
They have.
That, that road is going to secure into their.
So maybe that first house is going to be.
The first house they built?
Yeah.
The first house they built?
It's the biggest.
But the thing is, it's not like your situation because there's a potential.
We can walk to it, it's like enough. It's just enough to walk.
I'd like.
It's the best way. Okay. They do have, I mean, a geisha with you. Maybe that's. Yeah. Well, I want to be.
I'll sell your attention.
Well, it's kind of because like right here. But when I go down here, and so one time my daughter and I went through the woods.
Hey, do you want to ride the police?
Came out up here near the water tower.
I don't know what you do with it, really.
Did a lot of things going on. It's beautiful.
I think, I think, I think knocking it down is not.
Well, I know, and it's.
What is your name?
Matthew. What's your name? Eighteen S Y.
That would be great.
Boyfriend.
It's seven, seven, four. Three, one, zero, million, zero, four, seven. And that's Debo, D-U, B-A, U, and Christopher, too, is my husband's.
Keep yours first.
Sorry.
We'll keep yours first.
Yeah.
I was just asking the condition of the shed? And they said it's not really a movable thing.
It's not, it's.
So that was, I was going to say.
We just want, we're just looking for.
I was going to say, I figured it's better to. They have. They shed more. That's what you want.
I'd love to have.
But if it's not good enough shape to you, then.
We, I mean, we use it.
What's your, what's your.
P-R-U. C-H-R. Yeah, it's all by these.
Well, it doesn't matter. I was, I was putting them in uppercase because I know, I know what it is.
So you can read it?
If I, if I just scribble.
I would not. So I was just encouraging them to come up with what solution would make this a better
situation for them, like the screening or no screening and screening on this side or whatever the, you know, the desire.
You know, as far as the fence goes, if it's that close, I don't even know.
That's what I mean, because it is in the fence, ten feet off here, or whatever, there's eighteen feet off here.
You know, I just wanted my, you know.
Yep.
A little shed, you know, five hundred old shed, nothing.
Where's, where's, where's the light?
Can we move this information step up to the.
Is kind of like.
Oh, right there.
Right on the corner of where the access road is.
Well, here's the action.
Yeah, so it's like right about here at the end of.
Is it near the light pole?
Yeah, it has like a little fence, a little fence, and then there's a light pole that comes out.
But is it, that's not the toll pole from the town that you're like.
No, this is mine.
Here, your driveway comes out right here, where is it to your driveway?
Right about there.
Okay.
So it's right, so this is where the shed is, right?
No, that's. Shed's right here. This is, this is the road.
Oh, so this is where the light pole is.
So this is your house. Your, your house is here. This is your house and this is your driveway. This is your shed. So everybody comes in here. There's a, there's an overhead, overhead wire right here with the, with the, the electric pole. It might even be that right there, so.
No, it's right about in here. It's on our grass, right near that access road.
And I don't know what they drew, but this is like the driveway near the road.
So ours is like right here, it has a little fence and a little, that's all I wanted.
And just, and, and it's, a light switch in your house turns on.
Yes.
So there's some underground wire to.
We, we put our, we put our Christmas lights on it and it's just a little light pole, but to me it's a lot, I don't know. And that's what I want.
Yeah, no, and then.[1543.12]
This is your shed. The driveway comes in here. There's a, there's an overhead, overhead wire right here with the, with the, with the electric pole.
It might even be that right there.
So.
No, it's right about in here. It's on our ground, right near that access road.
And I don't know what they drew, but this is like, the driveway near the road.
So ours is like, right here, it has a little fence and a little. That's all I wanted.
And just, and, and it's, a light switch in your house turns on.
Yes.
So there's some underground wire to it.
We, we put our, we put our Christmas lights on it. Just a little light pole, but to me, it's a lot, I don't know. And that's what I want.
Yeah. And then.
The other thing is, we have a fence here, on this side of the shed. So if that could be moved to this other side.
Is it the shed?
Yeah. Got to sign in.
That's what I meant, I meant, no, I meant.
I know, that's.
I meant, okay, so.
Calm down.
Okay, I work with them, but I mean, it's not their job to read, you know, do everything.
No, it's your job if you take in my plan, you have like that.
No, I know, and then it's, it's a good neighbor thing, but we can't force them to.
It's not gonna be totally expensive, it's just, it's the right thing to do for people if you take. What did he say? It is. Alright, you're signing your name, representing, so. The eight.
So you've been using it, but I'm glad to talk to you about it, I'm sure.
Uh, you're supposed to kind of.
And talk, I mean, yeah, and I, I mean.
Yeah, let's move.
Okay, Raj.
Just let us know before they're gonna sign.
There will be.
Do you, um, where'd you buy your house in West Wilson?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Wester? No.
See you on the twenty eighth.
Lannister, that's, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
That's our job.
Alright, so we have, actually.
Is it seven thirty?
Building's, yeah, seven thirty, we got it right on time. Who put that time in?
Who put that time for thirty minutes?
Doesn't think. You've been waiting a long time.
When you feel comfortable talking about it? You email?
Motion to adjourn.
I know, we're saying we have something on there about the Girl Scouts, so if you wanna discuss that.
We have something about the Girl Scouts?
One hundredth century, right? Do you have the Girl Scouts?
No, that's a time extension across the street.
That is, we can tell what is.
No, okay, so. Then we can talk about anything.
Um. Do you have something quick? Uh, Ben?
Um. Let me see.
No. Jeez.
Uh, I just found some things up today. You would ask some questions on, you'd send an email, I don't know if we'll talk about that now, or.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, that's not that big a rush, we've been sitting on that for four months anyway.
But he asked that.
He has, the trouble is, yeah, and actually, we don't have to act, so that's true. Since the planning board doesn't have to act, we, we don't have to worry about that.
I know, it's ten days.
No, we don't have to act, cause we didn't put it in our agenda, so, I mean, if it's in the agenda, if we act on it at our meeting, it should be on the agenda for a discussion if someone was concerned about it.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna act, it's not our job to act on. This is about ninety-two?
Yes.
In ninety-four.
Okay.
Which is what you're.
Yes, yes, okay.
Well, we can talk about it after.
Well, let's do it now, let's know, let's just get it done.
Motion to adjourn.
Just so in meeting time, that's all.
Not do it during meeting time.
Everybody's.
We're leaving after meeting time.
It's already nine thirty, what's the meeting time?
Well, I, so this is kind of unofficial then, not planning board, it's just mostly you then.
Just go.
No, it's, it's the planning board, it's, this is, this is official, the planning board's meeting, we can talk about it.
Okay.
But the planning board's not gonna make a decision, so we don't have to have it on our agenda.
Okay, um. Which one do I want to go on first? Okay, um. Oh, right, eighteen, eleven, please.
While you're planning, certificate of site planning review approval extension. We wanna, do we have any comments or changes to that for one hundredth century drive? We drafted something and circulated it around? Anyone have any comments, changes that needs to be made? We voted on it the last time, we just need to sign it here.
We extended this one before?
This is the first extension. This is the first extension.
First extension.
You wanna read it?
Yeah. So why do we, is this, just to, you put the whole?
I, I changed the intro, the voting at the meeting of January eleventh, tenth, to extend the timeframe for work to occur by a judicial year on the.
On the judicial permit, which is this.
So it's all right there, so they don't have to have two separate documents to dig, dig through things. So this is the extension and the, uh.
Well, that's weird, so we're gonna vote on it twice?
No, we already voted on it, does, does anyone have any changes before we sign it?
No, go ahead. Motion to issue or approve this?
No motion, we're just signing.
You don't have to motion it?
Do I sign?
Yeah, I'll sign it here. You sign it.
Somebody has to sign it.
I signed it and you two.
You, you didn't, you passed it along.
No, you're not. Alright, so we have to get Cheryl to sign it. Can you email Cheryl?
Can we just sign generals?
Yeah, do that on video, on the TV, yeah.
X.
Forty, Mark, do you know that?
Don't do that, Mark, we need you at the hearings.
Which hearings?
The else, the Senate, uh, FBI?
Oh, yeah. Alright, you ready?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, on offensive permit for ninety-two North Main Street. Uh, item eighteen, it says, in accord to the state building code, the town building officials shall conduct a final inspection and issue a certificate of occupancy for any building in the project within ten days after receipt of the written application by permittingee, so long as the ways to base course of payment and other improvements necessary to serve such building adequately have been installed and constructed in a reasonable performance of the final plans and construction documents and all state code requirements. So he's, it says, I have to issue that.
Yes.
If I don't, um, nineteen, the failures of the town building official to act within ten days of application to issue a certificate of occupancy as set forth above shall be deemed a, shall be deemed to constitute a constructive issuance of a certificate.
So is there any way to deny it?
Well, in the notice section, um, there's a couple things I gotta research. Section J, condition thirty-one, prior to issuance of any occupancy permit, the permit shall convey the land identified as lot three in the final plans to the town of West Wilson Conservation Commission or West Wilson Land Trust. I gotta verify that that's been done.
I don't think we want it. I thought we were leaving it with him.
I thought we were too, I didn't think we wanted it.
I think, I don't think we were gonna do that.
Because if we can leave it with him, that's more land area.
It's more taxable land.
Subsidized housing inventory, well, no, not in tax.
That's true.
It's subsidized.
And I'm, it's not, not, it's not.
Well, but it's part, but it's still part, and in part.
It's still part of the thing.
Affordable housing complex, so it gets qualified under the two and a half, or the one and a half percent in land area.
Okay.
So actually, I would make sure it didn't happen.
Well, but that's, those are the thoughts from us.
Ben, um, cause I noticed concern about the playgrounds not being done and a few minor things. Uh, I'm gonna go up tomorrow and look at the landscaping to make sure that the, I'll get to that in a second. Um, it says landscaping of common areas adjacent to the building and landscaping around in respect of the building itself is not completed prior to issuers, issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for such building, the permittee shall provide the town with a bond to their security in a form which you agree upon by the town in the permittee. And in the amount determined by the board in consultation with the building inspector based on the permittee's reasonable estimate of cost to complete this landscaping work associated with the building. So, we can get a bond to make.
But be careful with Ali, cause the last time he did it, he wanted to issue a bond that wasn't one of the three kinds of bonds that we accept.
Okay, well, it has to be something that's agreed upon.
Right.
With the board.
And the thing to, and the thing to pay attention, VHB is very good about establishing the value, how much it should be. So they've got experience in doing that, when we do the subdivision things, they look at the value and they say, okay, he may be able to do it for three hundred dollars or three thousand dollars, but if he defaults.
He wasn't gonna do it.
We're gonna have to hire someone to go out there and do the work, so instead of it being a three thousand dollar item, it's a five thousand dollar item.
I agree.
So that would make sense to have VHB draft the whole thing for you, if you want. I mean, that would be my recommendation, is that have them, or, yes, do you have a clerk of the works on that job? Or?
He does, he does.
Okay, well, whoever is doing that type of work, they know what still needs to be done, they know the general costs of that work to be done, and then you add a twenty-five percent or thirty percent contingency on top of it, and that's the value of the bond, and the form of the bond, you should have, and I remember, who was Bonnie?
Oh, okay.
Uh, that's the tax collector.
Uh, treasurer.
Treasurer. She said, we deal, we want cash bonds, we don't want securities of any other type, because they can walk away on it. So it's a cash bond for that amount.
He wanted a line of credit from a bank to be the bond?
Yes.
Which, if he goes bankrupt, then the line of credit goes away, so it doesn't really do you any good, you know?
And Bonnie's been through it, she could help you if you need it, but it's generally a cash bond is what you want.
And I would say have his clerk of the works write the document, but tell them you're gonna have VHB review it and check the estimate. And that way, VHB doesn't spend as much time doing this, it was a little cheaper, but he's honest, because he knows VHB's gonna be on it, you know?
Right. Yeah, and, yeah, you could do it either way, either have VHB do it to start, or just check it, which is a little cheaper.
Well, regardless, he's gonna have to do what he needs, what's on the plan.
Yes.
Because in order to get the certificate of compliance, right?
Well, that's what he's issuing, aren't you?
No, no, certificate of occupancy.
Oh, occupancy, okay.
I'm talking about certificate of compliance from, from the, um, conservation commission. You know, as far as, you know, the drainage and all of that stuff. That all has to be done in accordance with the plan, so he has to do a final as-built.
Yeah, but didn't we have that taking years for the Afro Terrace project?
Yeah, but that's all, that was taken here.
Well, but I know, but it is.
Track record isn't so good.
Is there, in my email, my response to what you wrote, is there a reason why you wouldn't issue a temporary certificate of?
There is a temporary now, and he's requesting a final, he's giving a written request of final.
Right, but it doesn't say here that you have to issue a final, it says you have to issue a CO. So you're issuing a CO for six months.
That's still, that'd be, still considered a temporary.
Right, but, but he's asking for final, it doesn't matter what he, what he's asking for. It says that when he, when he asks for occupancy, a certificate of occupancy, you have to issue one.
Right.
And so you are, you're issuing a temporary CO.
No. Uh, no, cause he's already, he already has a temporary CO.
Which expires when?
Six mon, uh, it's a year, I believe, on that one.
Right. Okay.
But he's requesting a final CO now.
Because.
But it's not a compliance.
Because in this document, it says, in accordance with the state building code, the town building officials shall conduct a final inspection and issue a certificate of occupancy. So when he's doing a final inspection, that means that certificate of occupancy is the final.
Right, and it says, um.
And he has to do it within ten days.
Right, that makes sense.
If he doesn't do it within ten days, then it becomes automatic.
Constructive approval, right. Right. Well, I mean, if you have to issue a CO, and you don't have, you haven't found any problems, then why not issue a CO?
Well, I was, that's why I was going to the landscaping or something, complete the playgrounds. So I was looking to get a bond before I issue the permanent CO.
So then you give him a response, so you've actually, you've acted within the ten days, and those are the two reasons. Is there any other things, is the finished pavement done? Is it all graded?
They inspected by VHB.
So it's all the landscape, because you can't really get that done at this time of year anyway.
All trees and the, uh.
So you, you, you could hold on to it, right? For that reason?
Well, it sounds like you can't hold on to it, there's no.
No, cause if I don't issue it, then it's assumed to have been approved.
And that's worse, because then it's approved without the bond and the conditions.
You can.
If I go for the bond.
Yes.
Make sure the landscaping is done, and then issue the CO, but we'll have the bond until he gets.
Done.
The landscaping done, and he can occupy his building, it's up to us, the financing through the state that they want the CO.
Right, and that makes sense, but what happens, let's say he requests this certificate of final inspection.
And you fix.
And you inspect it, and the beams are the wrong size, there's some serious structural problems that are there. You have to issue a CO?
Well, no, I could fail it on some, on something like that, then it's.
Well, why couldn't you fail it because of this other stuff?
Because in, in the wording in here, it says, um, so long as the, it's, the way it's written is, ten days after receipt of a written application by the permittee, so as long as the ways, forensies, to base course of payment and other improvements necessary to serve such building adequately have been installed, constructed in reasonable performance for the final plans.
Right, so that's the ways, that says nothing about the building. So it's only allowing you to deny it if the way and the access is not adequate?
Right.
But if the building, if you've had a problem with this guy, and he had, not that he has, and I, I don't wanna suggest it, but just as an example, if there was a problem with the supports for the decks, and he needed to fix it, he hasn't fixed it yet, but he still requests this final CO, based on that, it sounds like you would have to issue it, even though you know the decks are not safe.
No, then I, I have a reason for denying it, the way it is now, I have no reason for denying it, except for the landscaping's not done, and there is a provision in that that we can get a bond.
So do you think within ten days he will get the bond?
It's official to act, failure of the town building official to act within ten days of an application.
Doesn't mean to issue, right?
Right, I can, I can deny it, I can say, I need a bond before I can issue it.
Yep.
And that's what you do, so you deny it, say you need a bond, and you need to resolve the issue with the playground or whatever.
Well, that, that would be all with the bond.
And we put everything you want the bond to cover, the playground, anything else, I just have a bond cover everything, you know?
It would all, anything that's left, which is, I believe, just the playground.
Oh, yeah.
But I was gonna go up tomorrow, um, and take a look around, make sure there's the, cause there's.
He probably hasn't planted trees.
There's ten foot trees.
Oh, there is?
On the plan, um, I believe there's seven of them. And I just wanna verify that they're in there.
And if they're not, then put that in, under the bond too.
Right.
Yeah.
And in the bond that is approved.
Cause I would, I would hide under that then, I would say, here's your CO, give me a hundred thousand dollar bond to cover two playgrounds, fifteen trees, or whatever it is, you know, all this kinda stuff, and then, you know, he'll do everything he can to get his hundred grand back. I mean, that's the, that's what he does, you know?
I agree. We didn't, if, if, if we didn't get the bond from him, okay, then the reimbursement of the bond would be completion of everything that was required and the final as-built.
Put it in there.
Well, yeah, put the price of the as-built into the, into the bond.
And there's probably some wording in the.
Complacency, pardon me.
Yeah, in the, in the bond issuing document that says how he gets it back. Like, he has to go to the ZBA, or he goes to you, goes, does something and gets it voted on.
The ZBA is the one that's gonna determine.
When he's complete.
No, the value, the value.
Oh, okay, or the value, but I mean, it probably has to go to some board to be approved, so that it gets bond back.
ZBA, right.
Yeah. But that would be in the document that goes along with the bond.
So in order for, so if he, if he posts a bond, he has to do everything that the bond said he needs to do, inclusive of his certificate of compliance from the, from the conservation.
No, it can only be what's required by the bond, put everything you want in the bond, and then it's over.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, you're saying the same thing.
Okay.
And it's not, and if, he has to do everything, and once he gets the final, the certificate of completion from, uh, occupancy, from the, from the Concom, and he's done the final as-built, and that's been reviewed and approved by VHB, and it's been, everything's been, then he gets his bond back. Cause right now, he has money that we've been using for.
Then he gets his bond back, as long as he's put the money in to pay VHB too, I would say. Yeah, you could put money on the bond to pay VHB.
Right, for inspection services.
Yeah, it says the amount to be returned by the board in consultation with the building inspector.
That is board.
Right, but you also.
The document, what he is reading is from the complacency permit.
Right.
Yeah, which is governed by the ZBA.
ZBA.
Right, zoning board.
And I, I mean, within ten days, I would just get that CO with the bond.
That I need this.
Right.
Need a bond, and I'll.
And if you wanna send a draft of the letter of what things should be included in the bond, we'd be happy to look at it, just to, make, see if there's things, there's always things you forget, but a couple extra set of eyes would help.
And, and I would say Bonnie would be the best person, I think she wrote ours for new one.
Right.
Yeah, she's the one who got us the, whatever, the, the document, you know? And then you put the conditions to it, but she has the, this kinda bank, this kinda something, this kinda something, you know?
Alright, maybe there's one other thing, ninety-four?
Oh, um, I, I'll have to refresh my memory on it, cause this just came up this morning, you sent an email. Cause I know I talked to Ali about that, and he has documentation with that, has been a free family for decades. Ever since it was built, so that's what I gotta get.
That's interesting, cause I thought, open shahs that lived there, it was a family. I mean, I know I'm old, but that decades idea seems, time may have passed.
I'll exactly what the word was, cause I haven't had a chance.
But it's been a single residence district for a long time.
You're right, the, the thing is, is that, when this whole project started in, in two thousand and four, that was, is now ninety-two, was all part of ninety-four.
Okay.
He came before the, the ZBA to do an A and R, to, to separate the house from that property, okay? There was a lot of.
And that back piece that you were talking about.
Right, there was a lot of, there was a lot of questions and concerns about, could the ZBA do an A and R? Well, I found.
It's done now.
From a lot of sources, that in a forty B project, because the ZBA acts as the planning board and everything else, that they can do an A and R, that that's the only time the ZBA can do an A and R. Every time, any other time, it's always the planner, that you know.
Yeah.
We did, in, when we did that, we did allow him, as part of the conditions of, you know, of the project, that he could have his office in the house, okay? Until building A was constructed, cause he had intentions of moving everything into building A, into the bottom floor, the, his office, and now the property management is in there. Once building A, we had that bottom floor finished, he then moved everything into that, into that building, so.
So that was the business aspect, right?
That was the business, but that was approved, that was a condition that we granted him.
Yep.
When we gave the, the comprehensive permit, okay? This thing now about, you know. This thing now about, you know.
Apartments.
The fa, the apartments and stuff. Don't, I, I understand, you know, that people are looking at the assessor's, you know, property card, which basically, you know, I don't know if it's right or wrong, but according to him, this is something that the building inspector and I are gonna have to research, you know? But according to him, this has been a three family for long before he even had the own house.
Yeah, but the A and R, I, I would say the A and R substantially changed the property, broke this off, did all this, moved the office, whatever, and I think you start the clock again there, and it can't be grandfathered.
Well, I, I'm not sure, but even if you try to get a grandfather, I think the regulation came into effect in nineteen seventy-four, and I know the family that lived there in nineteen seventy-eight, so I'm sure it was not an apartment, or like three apartments at that time, and it's after the zoning was in, was established, so I don't know. If he can prove that he's grandfathered, good luck to him, but I.
It's up to him.
It's really difficult for me to see it, because I've been to the place, or I was there.
No, no, I, you know, I understand, you know, and I, and I, you know, I, I agree, you know, they need, we need to have a different, a, a definite answer on this, you know, on what is the actual classification of the house.
And as far as I'm concerned, if the assessors are assessing them as three units, and it's being used as three units, then good, that's what our tax revenue should be doing. We should be getting the taxes based on what is being done out there, but if what is being done is in violation of zoning, it needs to stop, and then they won't be taxed as a three family anymore.
Well, the, the tax collector, they should be able to check some, how that property is taxed.
Well, you may be able to go back in the assessor's records and see when it changed over from a single residence to three units.
And, and what's the issue? He wants to sell it off now, and he's trying to sell it as a three family? Oh.
No, at one of our meetings, Cheryl got a complaint from someone that there was an apartment in a single residence district.
Three families, so.
Three family in a single residence.
And I went to the assessor's office and looked at their card, which I thought was correct, and it says, you know, and it's, and when he said he has made reference that this has been a three family forever, so.
And he, and I guess as part of the comprehensive permit, that was never included as, there's gonna be three units down here, part of our big permit?
No.
Okay.
So it doesn't get that.
It doesn't get into that.
If it was included as part of your approval, then it would be okay?
No, it's not.
The only thing, the only thing that approved for that house was that he could use that house as his office, until, you know, construction purposes.
That's what you said, that's why my email didn't say anything about the office, it was just the residence.
That was the only thing, and he told the building inspector that he would get everything out of it, so.
So now it is four units?
I don't know, to be hon, no, to be honest with you, I don't know if anybody's even living in the house.
I, yeah.
You know?
That's the house with the mailbox, the funny mailbox, right?
Yeah.
It still has a mailbox?
The mailbox is down now.
Someone that's got a big hole in front of your house.
The bills up here and the taxes.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so we'll get all this information, we'll draft it up, we'll.
Send it.
Email it to, to the ZBA, to you guys, and to the town.
And Chris Olson probably has some suggestions too.
Review it and send it back to us, and then we'll go for mail, but, you know, that, that's just what we're gonna have to do, because we need to make sure that this is right.
Yes, all right, we gotta get moving, because somebody's gonna fall asleep on me.
Yep.
I do have one more question.
All right.
Um, I know that you, the thing where it does site plan review of more than fifteen parking places, and it says in our zoning bylaws, that you cannot have parking in the front of a building. Is there any leeway on that?
A variance.
They can get a variance for that?
Yes, a zoning bylaw, so they can get a variance for it.
I just wanted to double check, because.
Variance from that, planning board or the zoning?
No, zoning issues variances.
So that is something, so on a site plan review, okay, the planning board cannot waive any kind of zoning.
Correct. Yeah, we can waive the stuff that's, is the section under site plan review, we can waive portions of that, because it says that we can waive nowhere else, and then in the sign bylaws, it says we can waive some.
Strict compliance.
There's your phrase, yes.
But that's covering all the sign, his sign is in compliance.
With this, with this.
The lighting isn't. The lighting shines all over the place.
It said they could have a light.
So the.
But that lights up the house!
The copy of the permit gave him a special thing and.
Said that he could have a six by eight, and he has a four by eight.
Really?
Yeah.
In a residential district?
It, it was in the.
Because it's, because it's in the comprehensive permit, that's what we.
It's spelled out in the comprehensive permit.
It says, uh, yeah.
I was driving down there, it's backlit, and it's bright, like it lights up the neighbor's house. I mean, I was thinking that you'd have light shining up on it.
Which, which side?
Just the sign that says ninety-two, just ninety-two?
No.
Does anyone say ninety-two north?
Ninety-two North Main Street.
It's just the big sign at the end of the driveway.
It's totally inappropriate.
That's what I said, but ZBA approved it.
Yeah.
But it's smaller than what he originally wanted.
Yeah, but we have bylaws.
Why do you need, why do you need a lighted, why do you need a huge lighted sign for on a residential street?
Yeah, and don't get me started on the Cumberland Farm sign, that we really need it.
So this is.
I gotta get that in my letter.
Just wind them up.
I love that sign.
Anyway.
It was a public information, right?
What's that?
So we did discuss, the ZBA did, did discuss on the other day, the building inspectors mentioned, uh, the last property, so they do not need a variance from ZBA?
Or the, we talked about the thing with the.
The parking and the Girl Scout cookies.
No, they need, they need a variance, it's, it's the, um.
They said they don't want to go to ZBA.
Right, they don't want to go to ZBA.
Who wants to go? Who wants to go to the planning board? Nobody wants to go to either one of them.
Chris was the only person.
No, he said, you know, I think my understanding is, you know, what's that, yeah.
The engineer said he didn't want to go, so.
Of course.
We've got another engineer from the, from Boulder that's gonna be working with the, that.
Tell me these guys that were here tonight wanted to be here.
People, people would rather go to the planning board.
On the parking in front of a building, how does?
Variance.
The standard for variance, I have.
But how did, like, honey farms get done, and cookies, and?
Qualified for a variance for a site that you created?
Who are you talking about?
This is the Girl Scouts over on Century Drive, right?
You just have to approve it. They have cookies, and you have to approve it.
No, this, this is the newest plan that they just sent to the building inspector today.
That, that property is what variances are about. The property is narrow, and whatever, it's got shale under it, I don't know why they can't dig into it. That's why there are variances.
You're getting cookies for free or something?
Lots of cookies for free.
See?
Well, I mean, it's, if they can meet the standard for a variance, then good, good luck to them.
Good, what did they say?
I'm not, I mean, I can't, I can't.
He cannot discuss.
Definitely, but I, I, may personally, I think that the main reason that they don't want to come is maybe they have a feeling that they're not gonna be able to meet the criteria. It's three criteria.
How can they not meet it?
They cannot meet the criteria.
They can meet it.
Are we discussing this? Move on.
No, let's move on.
Move on, let's not gonna.
Give me that, give me that.
It's not an adjective. Oh, good catch, Tim.
They absolutely can meet it.
Hundredth Century Drive, annual town report review.
Didn't start it.
Fast, that's good. Comprehensive master plan.
Good job.
It's, it's the only place I know you can get rewarded for not doing something.
So, and the comprehensive master plan?
Sorry, sorry.
I, I didn't, that's what I was calling you about. Was I supposed to go to that meeting?
No, she went to, so she was there, and we'll get her report at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's step like.
Is she all right? What's, everything?
Cat, cat is sick.
Dog.
Dog, but yeah.
Cat, dog, you know?
We got response from town council regarding some zoning questions that we asked about land uses.
Yep.
Yeah, still worth it. The bottom, that's the bottom.
All right, so I asked the questions that.
That I brought up.
Previous meeting in regards to, if it's not an included, you may want to listen to this, uh.
Building inspector, you stay for this one.
Recall, I emailed town council to ask about, um, if it's, if something, if a land use is not specifically stated in the zoning bylaws, is the land use prohibited, categorically prohibited? And, um, so we were talking about changing to certain things, and I brought up the idea of recreational marijuana, as well as landscaping and construction contractor yards, because there's no land, landscaping or construction yard.
It's not specifically stated in the zoning.
Stated, stated in the zoning, neither of them are in there. So I asked that. So, passed her responses. She answers about the landscaping construction yards. In my opinion, uses that are not expressly included in the bylaws are not allowed uses. So that, for the construction yards, if we're gonna have them in town, we're gonna need to add something. So that was the answer, that's, there's a whole paragraph associated with that, but I cut to the quick.
Thank you.
The idea of recreational marijuana establishments.
If you don't specify.
The, the general prohibition on uses not specifically allowed in the table of uses does not apply to recreational marijuana establishments. So because it was written in the, um, what the state voted on?
Cannabis, cannabis control.
Cannabis control thing?
Cannabis control.
It says that it's allowed in the town, so you can't not allow it if it's not mentioned. So our next step is, if we want to do something, we want to put it somewhere, we need to write, um.
We need to add town a bylaw, zoning bylaw.
So at the moment, you could put such a store anywhere in a business zone.
Business or industrial or.
Yeah, wherever it fits as a.
Medical marijuana place.
Well, it, it just, there is, we do have, um, medical marijuana treatment centers.
Yes.
But not the recreational stuff yet.
Right, but what are, and I can say, I'll email you guys the response that I, we got, but she's, she thought that based on her review of our zoning, that they would be able to place recreational marijuana in a business district or in the medical marijuana district, because it's a similar thing.
CMR, CMR PC, I don't know if you got the email, said on February seventh, at the Wusso Library, from nine to twelve, they're gonna be coming.
Asking questions.
On a working day.
Would they?
Because we're, because, because we're governed by the, by the state laws, which are still being formed, right?
You want?
Well, they're gonna be coming out with more information.
Exactly, right, yeah.
Well, we, to add to that.
I just got a, I just got an email from, uh, CR, CPTC.
Oh, yeah.
And about if, uh, March seventeenth, a training they have at Holy Cross every year.
Well.
Now, um, just, um, just, uh, recreational marijuana is one of the tentative topics.
Yes, as part of this email that we got, it had attachments of a couple of their presentations that had more information. So once I send it to you, you'll have the most current information, so. We need to do a zoning bylaw in May if we want to put it in someplace other than a business or the industrial area.
Can you put on also the stormwater change?
Uh, that's subdivision, we don't need to.
Still bylaw change?
Subdivision, it's a subdivision regulation.
Oh, it's just a regulation?
We don't have to go to town.
That, the way to use information is harassing the, uh, the town council, okay? If someone is proposing to put something in, in an area, in industrial area, and it's not allowed, then they can't do it.
It's not allowed, correct. Well, it's not allowed, it's not allowed. And if it's not written in there, it's not allowed.
It is written.
Unless it's recreational marijuana.
Yeah, it's exclusion.
Wait, what?
So if someone wanted to go into the industrial area, and they are one of the uses that's listed, and it says it's not allowed, then they're not allowed. If it's one of the, if it's a use that is not listed at all, then they're not allowed, unless it's recreational.
Somebody wants to put a gym in industrial area.
If it's not allowed, it's not allowed. The answer is no.
But if it's not listed, it's also not allowed?
Correct.
So is there, so we should just put in lists of things that are allowed?
Yeah, well, no, you're putting your list of things everywhere in this town, some are allowed in certain areas, and some are not allowed in certain areas.
For recreational marijuana, we have to specify.
Yeah, that one's.
That's special. But, but it sounded like what you're saying was if it's, listed is not allowed, is not allowed, if it's not listed at all, it's not allowed.
Yes.
So only the things that are listed and allowed are allowed?
Yes, yes, that's right, and that's, and some of those things you want in your industrial area, some of those things you want in your business area, and some of those things you only want in your residential area.
But if somebody came in with this, whatever, it's contractor's yard, so it's not listed anywhere, it's not allowed anywhere?
It's not allowed anywhere. So let's say if someone came in with a television, whatever is the, television station.
Fun.
Thing, it would, it's not listed anywhere, it's not allowed.
Windmill?
I don't think. Windmills are under the, uh.
Radio.
Right, and they actually have federal, they're, they're, they're similar to recreational marijuana, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's why we talked about that a few years ago, about what to do with wind power, wind generation.
We never did anything with it.
We didn't finish it, but we talked about it.
You started.
Were you there?
Yes.
Yes, I, I made a full.
I was assigned it.
Well, yeah, I never got finished, but.
Recreational marijuana, a town, town meeting, put it off of, of full study, right?
No.
No, they didn't do anything. Voted to not restrict it.
Not to restrict, no.
No, no, town meeting allowed.
No, that.
We can't have recreational marijuana.
Right, the warrant was to not allow it in town, and it failed.
Right.
So it's allowed in town. It has to be allowed in town.
It has to be allowed in town.
It's back to the state law.
Unless we disallow it. Because the town voted, at, on the referendum vote, I looked this up before the meeting, on the referendum vote, we, it was like two thousand four hundred against and two thousand two hundred in favor, so it went against the referendum, so that, under this cannabis control or whatever it is, the state law. Yeah, whatever the state law is, it says that if the town voted to not have it, they can put a prohibition in their bylaws.
Oh, really?
If they actually voted for it, then they wouldn't be able to change their bylaws to say no.
You're so good. Go WB.
So, so even, so if, even if the town voted not to have recreational marijuana in the town, and there's no bylaw to say that, then we can have it?
It's the state law.
But it could come up again at town meeting.
Because last year, when I was at that training, the guy that spoke about the recreational marijuana said that the state was leaving it up to the individual towns, because a week before that, the town of Westboro voted no, that they were not gonna allow recreational.
It depends, it depended on the vote, the referendum vote. If your town voted okay in the statewide election, the statewide referendum, it's different than if you voted no.
And I understand what you're saying, this is, these are the things that people need to understand when they're voting, because I don't think anybody really understands.
Right, well, they should, and that's what someone said, that it, the referendum should have been, are you in favor of recreational marijuana retail in your town, and that would have changed the vote, but that's not what was voted on, and that's not what we have, so.
You mean the statewide vote?
Yeah, statewide.
And then why, then why does the state turn around and say, well, we get up to the town?
Well, because they did, they left, that's what I just said, they left it up to the town. If you, if your town voted against it, you could put a prohibition in. Town meeting last fall tried to put a prohibition in, it didn't, it didn't pass. If they get it passed, if they get a prohibition passed, then it would be prohibited. So we could prohibit it, but it would have to get passed at town meeting.
So right now, if I wanted to put up a recreational marijuana clinic in the industrial area, I could do it in the county.
So for that, for that purpose only, we need to have a bylaw.
Right.
To limit how many stores we can have, how far it is, the setbacks from the schools and other areas, like, uh, where they can have the stores.
Well, that's all in the medical ones, it's similar.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but the number of stores, the town has a, we can limit number of stores. The state law cannabis commission, cannabis control commission says, uh, we can have like a twenty percent, uh, number of sto, can, number of recreational marijuana, we can have twenty percent of the liquor stores.
So if we have lit, a number of, let's say we have ten.
We have a lot of liquor stores.
Let's say we have ten liquor dispensaries, remember, might be, we'd have two recreational.
My question about this cannabis, recreational cannabis is that.
We're getting kind of late here.
Yeah.
And we got the munchies.
It has to be, see, it has to be.
Those are all, so.
But can they sell that anywhere? Like, could they sell it at honey farms and?
No.
No?
Maybe they should put one on.
They should have one at a drive-through.
At the Girl Scout place.
That, the, exactly, next door.
The Girl Scouts could sell special cookies.
More reason for your variance issue.
There you go.
All right.
Cookies and drinks, those are all, that's what they are talking.
That's a new.
Girl Scout cookie. And not only that, in this bylaw, that also covers to the, uh, not only the dispensary, the place where you grow, where you make all those cookies, not mark house.
The chief's been looking for something to do on his land, the chief should have a marijuana growing place.
Yeah, that would be agriculture, right?
Yeah.
Let's not go there. Um, all right, the last thing in that letter was to talk about, um, I asked a question about us on split lots in reference, I was thinking of nineteen Crescent Street, because when we, when, after that roundtable discussion, I was wondering, I went back and I started thinking about how to calculate the number of units, and.
We already approved it.
Part of it is general residence, which allows multifamily, part of the lot is single residence, and her response, and again, you'll get it, it basically says that the area that they can use to calculate the number of units shouldn't include all of the single residence district, but only thirty feet into it from the multifamily district.
So like you were saying?
So it's a, it's thirty feet into the single residence district, so I'm not sure if they still qualify for eleven units on that property, I.
Because they were using the whole. Cause they were using the whole property as this.
See, that's all changed now because Mr. Beersley sold the property to Mr.
But when someone comes in to do it with the calculation of how they got it, now we at least have something from town council to say these numbers are there.
What I'm trying to explain to you is that Mr. Capone has not presented anything to the town or to any of the boards on what his intentions are.
Right.
So we don't know what he's doing.
No, you don't, but the reason I'm saying it now is because we're on television and if he sees it or someone sees him and says, hey, there's a legal determination that you can only use this portion of the land instead of the whole portion of the land, maybe he'll save five thousand dollars in his engineering design so he doesn't go all the way down the road to do it with eleven units if he can only, under this interpretation, get seven. So he does seven and we move forward on that and everybody's happy. But I'd rather have him know it upfront and he's not going to know it unless we say it. And I didn't know.
Who's responsible for roundtables?
Yep, he's from Arizona.
Oh, he's not related to the Capone from town or?
Who, who's responsible, like who?
Do we need to get into that?
We should send it to Beersley.
We don't need to know, all right, sorry.
No, we should send it to Beersley or something, just to say that we, we researched what you talked about during your.
I don't, I don't think so, if they approach us, we can tell them.
No, no, I know.
I'm going to send it to the building inspector and he's our coordinator of the building, so.
But who, who arranges the, the roundtables, Anita?
No.
The building inspector.
Oh, do you?
Right, don't you do the.
The petition had asked to, asked to request it through the town, either the town registry or the.
Yeah, through Anita.
One of the two.
All right.
Yeah, so we should let Anita know that this happened.
She is, she was copied on it.
Okay.
She already had it.
Okay.
All right, we have.
She's being an elected official and getting things through this board is hard.
Other boards.
No, nothing.
Yes, no, CMR PC, you have to talk about it because I don't remember.
What is that?
CMR PC came up and they talked about wanting us to build buildings and I just kept complaining twice and they wouldn't give us money.
Okay, governor came out.
The governor?
Governor, he's proposing a.
Well, he wasn't there.
New bill, right? So with that initiative, he wants the town to change the bylaw, zoning bylaws from two third majority to one third.
No, he's doing it at the state level to make it go wash across everybody.
State?
State level to make it so that zoning bylaws for housing are only majority, not super majority.
Yes.
Okay.
And if the town, you get points towards getting some grant. So he wanted increasing the housing production by twenty twenty-five, hundred and fifty thousand or something like that to meet all the growth and everyone can afford a house.
Yes.
So his goal is to increase the housing productions. Either it is a single family, multifamily, or in rental places. And if the town gives, the state also gives the, some of the lands, if the town.
Yeah, they, like what we're, exactly what we're doing, they are encouraging other towns to do.
Oh, really? Getting land from the DCR?
Oh, yes, yes, and they're going to start filling in the reservoir to build.
It's creating a part of house.
So, so and also, you know, if the town is lenient on, you know, setbacks, giving variance, you know, all those things, you get the points.
What did they?
Also towards, towards the points, we get the credit. With that credit, you know, they will give us some.
It was a program like Complete Streets, but it was like Complete Housing or something like that, I forget what it was.
Housing production supply.
Is there a flyer for that?
So.
Uh, CMR PC had something, but it's not, oh, yeah.
So I can give you all those details, I think that's in the CMR PC website.
Yeah, but it's their presentation, not.
MMA, you know, National School Association, governor was there and he did mention about the thing. And the, the questions Mark Freeman.
Freeman asked.
Yes, it's, it's good, we have the housing productions. Yes, it's good, we are increased, as a town, we will, we want to increase the housing. But in town, what is the governor is going to do for the increase in school strength? Whether he is going to give any money for the schools? Whether he's going to increase chapter ninety funds? Whether he's going to increase fire, police, crime, all those areas? The answer is no.
Oh.
Yeah.
So we get money to build the houses, but then the burden falls on the town.
Not, not to build, build the houses to, to.
For the town to soak up the houses.
The, yeah, the town to, and the increase in the large.
Infrastructure, streets, whatever.
They, you know, if you put a bylaw increasing the large size, then you get points. You get, you get increased, decreased, I'm sorry, decrease the large size. So by, by doing this, you know, we'll be having too many houses. And also, you know, why the reason we came to Westborough and will be ruined.
Right, well, I, I also asked the question about the, I brought up affordable housing rates and I said, is there any talk about changing the calculation?
No.
So that the, it's not seventy percent of median, it's, it's a different calculation altogether to establish rental rates or, or, you know, the affordable rate as opposed to a market rate. And they said no. And they said it is a problem actually at a lot of places.
It's, it's up to the DHC.
Yeah, and they weren't going to do it.
DHC, and this one is not connected.
Oh, is mass housing?
Housing, mass housing and this one is not connected.
They're not connected, but they're the ones that established the, the rate at this, at.
Yeah, they are not going to do that, they are not going to do that.
They're not going to change, what's the state calculation?
During the MMA conference, I did go to one of those conferences, the same person was there. First name, Chris, Chris.
Christina's?
Yeah, Christina, Chris. So I tried to get to a, you know, answer and, you know, she didn't.
She's, she's only been there for less than a year, so she can't do anything.
All right, so that's good report. You kept them on their toes, that's good.
Yep.
They gave me the microphone and everything, I was standing up talking, it was great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't know you.
Yeah, that was a mistake.
All right.
Transportation had no meeting, it was snow instead.
Okay, all right, all right, I have nothing else.
There was some transportation thing, last meeting. We had a question for transportation.
We did?
I remember what it was.
Last time?
Let's read the minute, wait, let's read the minutes out loud.
In the transportation, you know, the transportation, there is one of the things, one of the engineers in the MMA conference asked, do we have any bridges, small bridge programs is there? We could get funding through small bridge programs.
To replace them, to repair them?
Fix it, fix it, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, like the, the, the system behind Walmart, or not, maybe not called behind Walmart.
The behind Walmart, the stream?
The, the culvert that collapsed?
Yeah, that's a culvert, not a bridge.
So let's call it a bridge and get the funding and fix it.
That's, that's what DCR is doing.
Actually, that's an idea.
A bridge?
Call it a bridge, cause you can go under it.
What?
Let's, we can name it.
All right.
The Mark Freedom Bridge.
Memorial.
Memorial Bridge, Memorial Bridge, that's the one, yeah.
So we did another planning movement?
No, that's true, we need them. All right, minutes?
Just go.
People read the minutes for January tenth.
All right, motion to accept the meeting minutes for January tenth as, as printed unless somebody has something to change.
Motion to leave.
Uh, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry we kept you so long.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That wasn't.
All right.
So any bills?
Bills, we need money to pay the bills.
We need.
Oh, right there.
Need money.
Pass the plate.
Do we need to sign off on, oh, there's one.
Ah, there's one bill.
All right, any other items that we haven't beat to death? Do we have a motion?
Sure, I can go over something. Hold on, I'll come up with something.
No, that's enough.
Last time we were quick to adjourn, we had business items after the adjournment. Are we sure that's not going to happen this term?
I'm sure, cause everyone's going home quickly.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We already got it, we need a second.
Oh, sec, I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's a VR adjourn.
Melody, I think I have the copy.